Recording in progress.
May to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Ah. Next up, we have the agenda approval.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dible Heights City Council approved the agenda for the special meeting of July eight, twenty twenty five as submitted.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next up, we have the approval of the ministers none. Next up is public hearings and public comments. Anything you'd like to talk about? You got two minutes. Are you speaking as a resident or are you speaking as the special legal counsel today?
Um, council chairman speaking as special legal counsel.
Okay, then you don't have any time.
Okay, uh, again, um, I'm making these statements just like I did the last time that we ended up having a closed session with regard to this. I have two comments. Uh, first, uh, the city council will need to handle, uh, this closed session like it did before. That is the city council, Ms. Hunt. Um, any select members of the administration and me will go into the closed session uh, to discuss the pending litigation. Uh, then, uh, Ms. Hunt and any select members of the administration, uh, will be excused so that I can talk to the city council uh, as might be needed. Uh, then we will either come back, uh, to an open session or invite uh, Ms. Hunt and the members of the administration, uh, back into the closed session uh, and then just go back into the open session. Uh, the second thing I must reiterate, and I'm not trying to be controversial in stating this, but I must reiterate, uh, my objection to Mr. Farina having any involvement directly or indirectly with regard to the spending litigation. Um, although he is no longer corporation counsel and should not be involved in this matter, uh, this is not my main issue. The main issue is that he has a personal conflict of interest related to this lawsuit where his actions related to the preliminary injunction have caused him to have a personal interest in this matter that is at odds with the interests of the city. So he should not attend any portion of the closed session. But given, uh, Ms. Hunt's, uh, expected insistence that he does, uh, and the city's need to cooperate with its MMRMA assigned counsel, Ms. Hunt, the city council can meet with Mr. Farina, present subject to what I have previously stated. And I'm just saying this because I want to be clear, uh, for the record and with respect to anything that might uh, be raised with regard to this issue in future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Anyone else in the audience?
Councilor Chair. If I may respond.
Yes, sir.
The special, uh, Mr. Miyaki is not following, uh, the Charter fifteen point through three. But in any case, he does not dictate how to close sessions that to be held. The corporation council has set that up. He was not invited, but apparently, um, Mariana typed that he was invited to the session. The third thing is that we're looking at pursuing early action. We're in this lawsuit because of the advice of Mr. uh, Miyaki to the council and has dictated this whole situation. So in terms of conflict of interests, yes, he's the one that's been trying to benefit financially from this. He's a disgruntled employee that's been fired by the mayor and he wants to come back trying to re- reiterate this fight between the council and the mayor's office. So in any one, it's a conflict of interest. It's Mr. Gary Miyaki and we're not finished with him yet. I just want him to know that this is the special legal counsel. He's not been appointed by me or approved by me. And as the charter says, the special legal counsel works under the, uh, corporation counsel. And that's what Judge Hughes had said in the lawsuit from two thousand nineteen where they had a special counsel appointed solely for the issue of audit. Nothing else. Didn't give any separate legal counsel to represent the city council.
Councilor Chair, I just got a quick question. Sorry.
Hang on.
I'm a little.
Go ahead.
But honestly, we never approved a corporation counsel. So I don't even know why he's talking.
And if I may.
Well, if I may respond.
Hang on one, hold on one second.
Guys, we never reappointed.
Time out, time out, time out, time out. Guys, point of order. Come on. Gary, I'm sorry. We're not gonna go back and forth. You just hang, hang on. Please hang on. Nothing more for the record. We have, we have a meeting at six o'clock. I'm done doing this back and forth between you and Roger. It's done.
Yeah, and, and, and I was just gonna ask if you need me to respond.
No, ma'am. Please. Guys, there's nothing from the audience here. Thank you. We're doing this way too much. Stop. We need to go to a closed session. Anyone else on the public? Anyone on Zoom? Next up, moving to a closed session.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dible Heights City Council moved to a closed session at five forty-three PM so the city council may discuss the pending litigation of Swoop. Uh, ET, uh, AL versus Dible Heights, which may include the city council, Chief of Staff Hernandez, uh, per Ms. Hunt's request, corporation counsel, per Mrs. Hunt's request, special legal counsel Miyaki and attorney Monica Hunter.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Don't even say aye. We're gonna go to a roll call.
Okay, just free span, yes, sir. Um, Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Moby Doon?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer. Where's Nancy? Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Robert Coniston?
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Yes.
That sounds sad.
No.
Uh, Tom Wenzel?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries six one.
Okay. Um.
Make sure you turn your microphone off.
In the specific.
Denise. Councilman, will you please consider giving, gracing us with your beautiful handwriting?
It's not legible.
You actually have the most legible handwriting. I'm definitely not giving it to Tom.
Recording stopped.
Thank you.
Catch you.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Recording in progress.
Can I get a recommended motion that the...
No, you need to go back.
You gotta return to open session.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council return to an open session at 6:29 PM.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state "aye".
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is a recommendation from our...
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council reject the proposal discussed in the study session. Second.
Motion made by... Hang on.
Close session.
Close session, sorry.
Close session. Read that one more time for me.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council reject the proposal discussed in closed session. Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state "aye".
Aye.
Ma'am clerk, can you actually do a roll call on that for me, please? Thank you.
Hassan Ahmad.
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Yes.
Hassan Saab.
Yes.
Nancy Breyer.
Yes.
Robert Coniston.
Yes.
Tom Wenzel.
Yes.
And Moby Dunne.
Yes.
Motion to reject is carried.
Thank you so much. All right, next up we have a motion to adjourn the special meeting. Councilman Saab.
Move Dearborn Heights City Council adjourn this Dearborn Heights City Council special meeting at 6:31.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state "aye".
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion adjourned. We're gonna take a quick five-minute recess and we'll start our regular meeting. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Yeah, they're gonna give us new motion.
Oh, okay.
Moving on, Councilman Wenzel.
Recording in progress.
Let's wait for time to stick a seat and we'll begin. Everybody's mics on? Ready, ma'am clerk? I move, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Dearborn Heights regular meeting at 6:37 PM. Madam clerk, may you please take roll call.
Hassan Ahmad.
Present.
Moby Dunne.
Here.
Nancy Breyer.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Hassan Saab.
Present.
Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. And today we're gonna have Alicia, who's here in the audience, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Thank you, Alicia, you may be seated. Just a little bit thrown off guard there. Next up, we have the agenda approval.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agenda for the regular meeting of July 8, 2025, as submitted.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state "aye".
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have approval of the minutes. Minutes of the regular meeting of June 24, 2025.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes from the regular meeting of June 24, 2025, as outlined in 4A.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Coniston, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state "aye".
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, let's keep our eyes on, guys. Please, eyes open, eyes see us. Next up, we have the minutes of the special meeting of July 1, 2025.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the special meeting of July 1, 2025, as outlined in 4-B.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state "aye".
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is public hearings and public comments. You have two minutes. And I believe some of you asked for an additional minute and he's coming right up. They're racing themselves to the podium. You got an additional minute here.
Good evening, Zohair Abkhath.
Hold on, one second. Second, we just did the agenda approval. Okay, we'll do that in a minute. This is the first. We're on public comments room. Okay, all right.
The first thing, I'm going politely to ask one of you who voted just for the fire station to be approved at the location which the administration chose. One of you to change their vote because that location is not the proper one. And I hope one of you has the courage to change their vote before the meeting because that's your right to do so. Second, do not give your authority and your oversight to this administration. Because this administration has proven over and over and over disregard to the charter, disregard to every law and every etiquette. disregard to the charter, disregard to every law and every ethic in this city. They approved so many things illegally, they hired some people illegally, and they asking you to give them a blanket basically check to pay all the money for all the contracts without coming back to you. That is your authority, do not give it up, and I ask you strongly not to give it up. $1,600,000, we overpaid the county, and nobody followed on on it, and I thank the treasurer for asking for it, I hope you give her the power, since the administration didn't care, to follow up on that 1.6 million, which is our money, give her the authority to go and ask for it. We, we are entitled to it.
I'm sorry, Mr. Abdulhak, I do wanna interrupt you quickly. We were at an event the other day, and Councilman Ahmad actually brought it up to the county executive himself.
Yes.
And he said that, you know, they were working on bringing it forward, I think about two weeks ago, he brought it up at an event.
Okay.
So I just wanted to recognize that. I didn't, but Councilman Ahmad also brought it up.
Thank you, Councilman Ahmad, for at least following up on it. Uh, thank you, Councilor Chair. One last thing, the mayor bought a house in Dearborn. He paid $600,000, it's listed as his primary house, and he listed his house in Dearborn Heights for sale. Now, the legal issue, is he sleeping in Dearborn, or he sleeping in Dearborn Heights, is he legal resident in Dearborn Heights? If he moved off Dearborn Heights, he should not be mayor, he should be removed, and I do ask Rajar to have, you know, the, at least the initiative to check on it, to see if this mayor is legal to be our mayor, or he's living someplace else outside of the city. The last thing, my friend Rajar, I asked you on April 22 last year, if, if you have sent some, this year, if you have sent something to the Attorney General regarding the review of the, of the charter, and you said on the 22nd, yes, you did send something to the Attorney General. The document from the Attorney General shows that you sent the document next day, you did not send them on the day you said you sent them. I hope this doesn't happen, because you are an attorney, I had lots of respect for you.
Your name is up, sir.
I hate to think that you did not tell me the right information.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on, I know you asked for an additional minute, I will go ahead and honor that for you.
Angela Vanegas, Dwight Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. I have a few concerns, and one of my biggest concerns is, is Van Houten Park Behind is supposed to be closed or not? Isn't there a safety issue going on there? Anybody got an answer?
Hundreds of safety issues.
Okay, isn't it supposed to be closed?
That's administration's decision.
You guys got kids out there playing with wires exposed, cracked concrete or whatever the plastic stuff they put up there all uneven, and we got hundreds of kids out there playing every day, does anybody care? Mayor? Oh, that's right, he's not here. Another concern I have is Amazon bill that we have on our agenda, $14,788 in one month to Amazon, yet there's no itemized deduction on what department, what this money was being spent on, and I think that is something that you guys should not approve on this agenda. It's a lot of money for a month to spend on Amazon. Another thing I wanna touch base on again is the businesses on Ford Road, the Blight, been walking a lot of Ford Road lately, bottles, cans, weeds, these businesses are there, obviously they're still in business, they're making money. I think we need some enforcement, businesses need to, you know, this is part of our business area to bring people here, and it looks bad. Concrete's busted up, you know, things aren't clean, it just looks bad, and I got ahold of Mo this weekend, I was walking 4th of July, and we have another Airbnb next to the Jagged Fork on Ford Road, which had over probably 30 cars parked on the, on the lawn. He got ahold of the police, but again, we had another, more problems at another Airbnb, and I went on the Planning Commission's website today, and there's nothing for an agenda, which the meeting is supposed to be Friday, and so, 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 Thursday, yeah, right, Thursday, I'm sorry, so, canceled, so here we are again with the whole Airbnb issue being pushed back another month. By the time you guys get ahold of it now, it's probably gonna be September. So, you know, here we go again, residents, more problems, and I just wanna touch base on too about the, the trees. Sycamore trees are dropping everything on the ground again, we have residents, you know, people suffer, dogs, people are breathing this stuff in, and we can't even get them trimmed, so I just, somebody needs to step up, we just need to start taking care of things in the city, it's looking bad again. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Go ahead. Are you speaking as a resident or?
Comptroller.
A problem?
Intern comptroller, deputy comptroller, multiple jobs. So I am gonna ask that item 11A is removed off the agenda, as there is false information on there. I know there is a item 11A, the CSO, based in recapture, as Mr. Abdulhak said before, there is a claim that the administration did not contact the Wayne County and hasn't been in contact with them, however, there is email communication on April 24 confirming why the money can't be repaid, and based on the bond language, you cannot repay them, we cannot get the repayment back until after the bond is completed. And then on May 6, 2025, the email was forwarded to the treasurer, council chair, and council pro tem stating what the email, what the county has stated regarding that, so the administration did contact the county regarding it, and there isn't any the statement that the administration has not resolved this matter is false, they have resolved the matter, the issue is based on the legal language in the bond. We cannot receive that money until December 2027, and also I do wanna make the point about the treasurer being the point of contact. I think that's kind of overstepping the boundary, because the comptroller has always been the contact with Wayne County, and we have been in consistent communication with Wayne County regarding any matter that, regarding payments or balances that we have with them. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I do, I also wanna make a point about the Amazon bill. The reason why there isn't an itemized deduction is because those are 100 invoices, and if I give all those invoices, like a 300-page backup, if you look at the each line item, they're like 20 bucks, and majority of them are actually library items for their programs and their events that they hold.
Deputy comptroller, I've asked myself, I asked before, that I need itemized items for the.
Yeah, I mean, I could.
This time, I know, I saw it's a lot, but still, it's.
But I can do the itemized, it's just gonna be a very large on 300 pages.
It's ironic anyway, so.
Okay.
You don't mind.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Mary, since I have you up there quickly for an item on here.
Yeah.
Didn't we approve item 14 at the last meeting? We passed it, because we did a budget amendment on it?
So, you guys technically approved it, but there wasn't a motion to approve him afterwards, so during the claim session, last meeting, you guys removed him off the agenda, off the claims for that person as well as the other individual, and then asked for me to come back with a budget amendment. But once I created the budget amendment, that was passed, you guys did not reopen the claims to approve him, that's why he's back on there. All you have to do is approve him this time, and he'll get paid tomorrow.
As long as we're not approving twice.
Well.
That moment.
You guys removed, last, the claims of the last meeting, you guys removed them off claims. Because you removed them off claims, in order to have him repaid, you would have to reopen that motion.
Put it back.
Yes.
Thank you.
I just wanna make sure that, Georgia, contact me, her and I both understood it that way, so I appreciate you guys for bringing that to my attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Speaking as the treasurer, this is on the agenda, item 11A, which is a resolution. So real quick, I'm gonna give this here, there's some additional information, that includes the financials from Wayne County directly, and thank you, Councilman, for follow-up on that. If you look at this, I have emails, lots of emails, which started, by the way, when Hassan Jamal was our Budget and Compliance Director, and we were working together to pursue getting this money, the discovery of the over-captured CSO of 1.6 million. I will tell you, we started that in 2021. I have lots of emails from 2021, looks like about 12 pages worth right here. 2022, there's another three pages, 2024, I've got eight pages of emails, they're all there for you. I'm gonna stand in, you know, the most recent email that was mentioned just now, per 2025, we fully know what the bond language says. We know that the obligations have to be paid, they are being paid, they have been, they're there. We've got the record, you see the financials directly from Wayne County, I didn't make those up, those are theirs, okay? What I'm asking for is the oversight by the treasurer, who is the receivable end of this city, accounts receivable. This is money owed to the city of Dearborn Heights and the taxpayers that they paid, that they overpaid CSO with Wayne County. Okay, we are now in 2025, we started this process in 2021, and yes, that can, you know, we're nearing the end, but quite frankly, if you look at all those emails, those are all emails between myself, Mr. Jamal, and Wayne County, every one of them. The only email I have in particular from the mayor is where it says, and I will tell you the date, oops, sorry about that. That was August 23, 2022, at 7:04 PM. Please hold off on calling or pursuing anymore, we can discuss this internally. I'm sorry, this is 2025. All I'm asking is, we need some direction to get this thing done, okay? That's all I'm asking for in the resolution.
I, I agree with you on this one, this, this, I wholeheartedly agree. Again, hang on, hang on, hang on, guys, guys, not doing a back-and-forth here.
No, I don't think we should either, I'm sorry.
We can have this discussion where I can have you both talk during, during that agenda item. To have a back-and-forth here, I'm getting too many calls from residents about these back-and-forths, and we have to just slow them down, guys, thank you. Are you all tied here, just, thank you so much. Anyone else in the audience? How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on, you have two minutes.
Miriam Eastman, 1615 Kenlock, Dearborn Heights. This has been going on for about four years. I was approached that the trees on the side, on Lawrence side, I live on Kenlock and Lawrence, but on the side of Lawrence, there are four or five trees that are falling. Today I had a branch, and there's been no rain today and no wind, so the tree limb, a big limb, that covered the driveway and that fell. They did come and take care of it, but I was told, I was approached, that the disease of the trees are gonna cause a problem, and do not fix the sidewalks until they take care of the trees, because it's gonna cause another breakage and another problem. Okay, so at, just before that, I was gonna fix the sidewalks, and I was told that there is a committee, or whatever you call it, that you pay half, the city pays half, they have a sidewalk taken care of, I don't know what you call it. And then I find out, I've been calling every couple months, no one comes out, no one answers, no one has addressed this with me. Then I'm told, well, that's gonna be eliminated in another year or so, about the sidewalks. So now I'm in limbo, so that says, homeowner, forget about it, you're gonna pay it when we tell you that you have to pay it, and you have to fix the sidewalks, and it's your responsibility. Wrong, this isn't right, this isn't an American thing to do. If you have been told, and you believe in the system, you would have done it two, three years ago when it was less expensive. Now it's gonna cost me twice as much to get the sidewalks fixed, and then if the trees come down, it's gonna even be worse. So then I was told, they're gonna come and take down one tree, but they don't know when they'll do the stump. This is ludicrous. I ask you, please, I mean, where are we living in, what are we living in?
Thank you, ma'am. Do me a favor real quick, please, can you fill out one of those forms directly in front of you? And then, Mr. Dancy, can we also get with the resident, she lives on the corner of Kenlock and Amboy. You know, I'm sorry, Kenlock and Lawrence, there is about four or five large massive trees there, and then I'd also like to see if Rick Watlin is on here, I still believe, don't we have the sidewalk program?
I believe so.
Well, they said they're gonna end within two years.
Well, then let's get on it before those two years.
I agree, and I'm willing to do my part, but then somebody said, well, they may not even be in charge of it after a year or so.
Well, let's hear from Rick, if he's on here, if you don't mind unmuting Rick's piece.
Only can say, Rick.
There he is. How you doing, Rick?
Good. We do not have the sidewalk program at this time. And we have never had the sidewalk program that the city pays half and the homeowner pays half.
No, we just, we just got a really good deal on it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but they, they know me at the Public Works, she says, I know you call up all the time. My thing is, when I wanted to do it, they were doing it, so now what's happened, now they're just schlepping me off until they say it's over, we're not doing it anymore. That's, that's sneaky. That's not a way in America to handle things.
It's not that we're not.
Two years, two years I've been told, and waiting for them to, I'll pay half, they pay half, so they're not addressing it.
Okay, let me hear from, from Rick, he's on Zoom, go ahead, Rick.
We are gonna be going with another sidewalk program, but we, we've never paid half.
Yeah, but you guys got a very good deal. Yeah.
Rick, but, but I'm saying, whatever we pay, the, the citizen pays.
Okay. Ma'am, just fill out one of those forms over there, if you don't mind, and then.
Unless, unless if she's talking about a program with the CDBG, not sure if they had something. Rick, did they have something with the CDBG, with the sidewalk, that somebody with limited income?
Not that I know of.
Then why would the city treat people when they came to inspect the trees on their own, I had nothing to do with it, told me, lady, don't repair your sidewalks until we take the trees down, that's a true.
Well, well, the good news is, our director is here, and he's gonna have a conversation with you, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Right, ma'am, just step up, or sir, step up. Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on, you got two minutes.
Your name's Joe Spada, for I live in Dearborn Heights.
What street?
Henderson.
Thank you.
On Centralia. I have a problem with people coming off of Beach Daily and just flying down Henderson. With no, I mean, there should be like a four-way stop there, or at least a sign on Beach Daily that says no right-hand turn from 4 to 7, because they always try to bypass the
Yeah.
the light on Ford Road there. And I'm here with a few of my neighbors here, they have to save a complaint. About it.
Is our chief police on, by chance?
Yeah, I did contact the mayor's office and, and went to the police station, and it was like a vicious circle.
Sir, fill up one of those forms and have the clerk's office email it to me, and I'll get it addressed with the chief directly.
Or maybe one of those little signs that have the speed limit on there.
The speed-up sign, I, I agree, I think those are very effective.
All right, one of these.
Yes, sir, thank you. Put your email on it and phone number, please. Thank you. Ma'am?
Yeah. That's not okay.
I'll get ahold, I'll get ahold of the chief for you folks.
How you doing, ma'am, please state your name, the city you reside on, and the street that you live on.
My name is Melinda Eastman, I'm from Dearborn Heights, I live on Kenlock. I think there's a lot of issues with our city, but I feel like the most pertinent thing we need to take care of is the looks of the city, the beautification. It is shameful, I'm embarrassed for Dearborn Heights, I'm from New Jersey, I've lived here for 10 years, and I think the main issues on Ford Road is one of the main areas, I think, in Dearborn Heights. It's a concrete jungle, there is tar everywhere, there's, and you can say, well, there's nowhere for the grass to grow, but those weeds are growing pretty high. I feel like the ordinance, no one's taking care of that. If, I love, I love the grace myself that there, you know, being a little lenient, people will get to it, but it's been 10 years that I've been noticing, and there's weed all over, there's tar all over, I think we should give people a year or two years to get rid of the tar, concrete, and have them put grass there, or something to make it look more beautiful. The streetlights are from 1960, I remember, about. I feel like even Garden City looks more beautiful than Dearborn Heights. I mean, we just need some new streetlights or some kind of modification to them, some pretty impatience hanging down from them, that would look nice. And the other thing is, we've had robo cans for twenty, thirty years where I'm from. So they're not even new, but ten years ago, we never had trash like we do near the Kenlock area. And I do, I understand there's a field there, so there might be a little wind tunnel. But where is, where is all the garbage coming from? Down the other streets? And I feel like those trash, the collectors are old, the trucks. They go on top of the truck, I've never seen that before, and I see things coming off them. Though it's not dirty people, nobody's taking their stuff and throwing it out the window. Um, or at the mosque or anywhere, I think something needs to be done about that as well. I think that's it, I have one more thing about the Crestwood football field, the beautiful football field that we just got. But I don't know if that's for here, but the fence, there's weeds all along it, it didn't happen when the um.
That, you can speak with the trustee over there, the vice president.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it, and I also, over the last few years, I've asked Moby Doon to do a couple of things for me and immediately they were done within a month, a few weeks or a month time, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
How you doing sir, please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Way three, six, six, two, five, centen. Last week, I emailed my state brother and the chief of staff of the Detroit way integrated health network because I was trying to get some resources and I was being ignored, so that's why I emailed my state brother and my chief of staff of the district, Wayne, because you're supposed to educate your legislators, so I, and my right had every right. Second to that, Dedekanizik Wayne County Commissioner, who is a member of governor's administration and his other job title is the C E O of the department. He has oversight over Detroit Wayne Integrated Healthcare. So all the group points within the city, Dedekanizik has oversight authority. So I think that when people are reaching out for rights and elected official can be the elected official and can be a Dearborn Heights elected official, when there's issues, if you have oversight, something should be done. Especially as you know that person as a state senator and you're advocating and teach people how to their state, so they understand, so they're Dedekanizik. So I think that it's shameless that I have to come here and point that out. Anybody could look at oversight, example, people have oversight over the parking license commission, people have oversight over the police department. So if the elected official Dedekanizik can be hired by the governor's administration and have oversight over a majority of Detroit Wayne, I think there's an issue. And I think that we're attacking everybody in D C, we're not looking at the issue right here in our community. So I just want to come, so I'm really happy I'll be staying in the city still. So I came, I was a little bit nervous, you know, if I had to move out or not, so I'll be back at the meetings. And second, bike riding on the sidewalk, it can really be hectic on a bike with the trees.
Thank you.
Uh, Rachel Lapointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. Um, so now that we started a new fiscal year, I'm going to be keeping track of some of these finance things and bringing some things to your guys' attention. Um, on this week's claims, item number two for artistic landscaping, I noted that there were um, thirty seven additional properties on that invoice above the original contract. And my understanding from last year was that additional properties were either properties that weren't initially on the bid list or um, that we had acquired. I thought that was rather high, so I looked into last year's bills and we jumped from nine additional properties at the end of the last cutting season last November to thirty five and now thirty seven properties, that's an extreme jump, I don't believe we purchased any properties. So I'm just curious why the first question is why we were so uh, off on our original bid list on that one? Um, and this is the D P W contract, not the ordinance one. But additionally, and more importantly, the motion to pass that contract limited the contract to sixty thousand dollars a year. Last year, the twenty four total was sixty five thousand, one hundred and ninety four dollars and ninety four cents. The two invoices we've already gotten for this year are combined twenty three and a half thousand. And with the number of cuts still to be billed that we haven't seen, we're on track to hit at least seventy one thousand dollars. So ten thousand plus over the amount approved in the contract in the motion by you all. So as far as tracking the contracts, what is allowed to be spent in those versus what is actually being spent? If we're on track, this whole contract goes through twenty twenty eight and has a max cap of three hundred thousand. There's no way we're going to have grass cutting services in twenty twenty eight if we continue on this pace. Thank you.
Thank you. I will, I just want to just uh, answer to Mrs. Lapointe. I actually reached out to artistic landscaping and I said, what's going on here? Because I saw the same thing. Um, the city has actually, if you saw on social media, the city had just evicted a bunch of properties. And on those properties, those are, some of those are, many of those were squatters of city-owned properties. And what started to happen here was artistic had to go out and actually cut those. Now, I don't know if they're on this bill or not, but you're going to see the properties that the city owns has a contract with uh, with artistic and they went out and cut it out. Another thing was, I had the president of Military Hills subdivision reach out to me and said, and there's actually pictures showing that this area used to always be cut and clean. And in the last three years, it looked horrendous and every day we would go back and forth. And I would hear it's Wayne Colony's, I would hear it's Dearborn Heights, here's Wayne Colony's, then it's Dearborn Heights. Well, guess what, we got to the bottom of it and it was Dearborn Heights. And what was happening was, they were cutting and they were leaving the strip on, on uh, of, of weeds and it was be growing and became bigger and you can only imagine over the years of two or three years, it grew so much more. And so I said, hey man, like if you're cutting this grass, we'd wet this. And they went out and they cut it because they were already cutting it, but as far as some of the holes that they increased time.
I will say that the ones, the eviction ones, I don't believe that most of those would have been in there. I believe those were the nine additional properties. However, I will double check that during the meeting on my other spreadsheet that I have. But I understand what you're saying that if there were, but I don't believe there would have nearly been that, like an additional twenty five properties.
No, I don't, I don't say twenty five, but there's, there's about, I think like six or seven evictions and I think there was another one yesterday and then we had a couple more.
At this point though, if we're adding forty five dollars per cut for all these properties, it might be in our interest to relook at this contract to make sure that we don't exceed the amount that we've already approved, right?
Yep.
Because we're going to run through it way faster, so it needs to be looked at.
Thank you, Ms. Lapointe.
I, I spoke with the owner also and um, he's billing for some work they did last year that he didn't get paid for.
Yep.
It's in there. Plus, he's doing court order uh, cut grass cutting.
Yeah, yeah, that they would, we don't, wasn't on the original bid.
So that's um, but his, his, his fact that he didn't get paid from work he did last year was due to um, a miss, a mishap by the mayor's office where there was a temporary person in, he submitted all the photos of the properties that he cut and she misplaced them. And so he had to go through and retake all the photos again.
I, I'm going to tell you, I had a great conversation with artistic landscaping. I was amazed how professional they are. Like I was amazed how professional, if we have to relook at that contract, we have to look at the recontract. But the city has an obligation to, to upkeeping its, its, its city. Because all I'm hearing it is blight, 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 blight. So if we have to subcontract something for blight, guess what, so be it. How you doing sir, please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on, and are you speaking as a resident?
Two Lane Street, Detroit, Michigan, I'm speaking first as a resident.
Okay, you got two minutes.
Um, at the last regular meeting that councilman Winslow missed, vote was taken and passed to uh, okay, the building of a fire station on the golf course. And the big complaint was that uh, this is what the professionals recommended. Well, I know a professional that recommends they build multimillion dollar homes on the golf course too. Just because a professional is recommended doesn't mean it's right. The fact, it doesn't matter what we're building there, it's the fact that we are building there now. And that goes against anything that was agreed upon when originally uh, voted six to one uh, about the contract on the golf course. So now I'm going to speak as a city councilman. Um, recently I've been working with the ordinance director, uh, Lafee for a location of a uh, community garden. And we came up with a really good site on Van Born Road. And uh, it's between Madison and Academy. It's got plenty of room for cars to park on it. Um, I wanted to put this on tonight's agenda so we can get going on it, preparing it for some fall crops and prepare everything for next year because we've been, or I've been talking about it and we've all been talking about it for at least a year now. And we needed the okay on this to go ahead and start the process of preparing this property. And I, I'd like to, as a councilman, I'd like to add this on the agenda tonight to vote on it. It's just, it's vacant property owned by the city. Um, and uh, we've been talking about it, this community garden for quite a while. It's, it, it fits in with the Van Born Corridor uh, project, which I'm a committee member. And uh, because we haven't done anything hardly at all on the Van Born Corridor, this would be a start of doing something for the Van Born Corridor. So I'd like to add that to the agenda if possible tonight.
Uh, how about I, how about I say we take it to a study session and we get the, the just set being, because like, with, with us saying that, okay, we can approve it by a garden, who's going to operate? Is Tom Marks going to operate it or is the city going to operate it?
Well, we have to subcontract it out or is it going to be a business owner?
Like, is it going to be made for profit for, you know, the commission is going to be a profit for the city? Is it going to be a profit for, somebody can lease it from us?
Well, no one wants, the, the people that want to be involved, they don't want to do anything until they get the approval.
Well, well, anybody can't, I, I don't think anybody can do anything unless, because if it's going to be open for bid, I mean, if it's going to be open for like profit, then it has to go for bid. Then you have to get the buzz.
It wouldn't be for profit at all, no, it wouldn't be for profit, it'd be completely not, hundred percent nonprofit. Um, we, there's, there's a couple of fruit markets and uh, in the area that'd be interested in helping set it up. And uh.
I, I know, but like, who, who's, who's to say who can take from this garden or not then at that point?
Well, we, we need to get started on it. And just, just like uh, the, the uh, short-term rental, which I pushed for four months ago to make a stop, it, nothing's happened yet. You know, just like the charter resolution, I, I tried, they said, let's get this on the, for this year's vote, that didn't happen. And this is just going to be another thing, let's, let's go to a study session, we need to just start and say, okay, we're going to approve it and you come up and present it to us. Because these people that want to put their, donate their time and effort, they're not going to start designing something and say, well, they didn't get approved, I wasted my time. You know, I mean, it's, it's, it's just something that we, you know, as residents, as part of the Van Born Corridor, this was part of the mass, Van Born Corner Master Plan to have community gardens and we haven't done anything on Van Born Corridor at all. We, we, we haven't had a meeting in over six months.
Over a year.
Well, we, we did have a little get together, but um, and um, speaking of evictions, I, I'm tired of these evictions, every council member up there has been called about a household full contents put out on the front yard. And we have no rules against it. And what we do now is we have the homeowner, the bank, or another entity that I'm going to speak of in a second, throw all this trash, all their belongings, if it's onto the lawn and with, in the hopes that Priority will have time in the next day or two to come pick it up. But what happens in that first night that all that stuff, belongings are put out in that trash, everybody goes through it. They even go through it while it's being emptied onto the, onto the front yard. We need to have an ordinance, I'm working with the court right now to cover that, you, you put one bag on the grass, that's a fifteen thousand dollar fine to the homeowner, to the landlord. And in a couple cases, you got, everybody here is going to be amazed that there was instances where a whole household contents were put out on the lawn and sat there for a week and it was done by the city of Dearborn Heights. Taxpayer money paid for some people to come empty a whole house of contents out of the front yard and sit there for a week. Paid for by taxpayers. We need to have an ordinance that says, you do not put one kitty's toy or a used diaper or anything unless you have a dumpster in place in front of that house before you start any evictions at all.
Councilman, I think that's what we added to the house taxes, whatever we do, it's added to the house taxes.
Yeah, but you want to live across the street from that? I had a guy, he had his whole family over to the Fourth of July, people have never been to his house and right across the streets, all this trash has been sitting there. And I don't blame Priority because they're busy, this is the busiest time of the season for a Priority. And they, they, first of all, they have the bid on it, they will go out there and they look at all the trash, they say, okay, you know, X amount to do it. And we get to it, or excuse me, you just don't, I mean, what we do is, if there's an eviction, we'll, we'll supply the dumpster then, put it on their property taxes. You cannot throw that crap out in front of the house and expect, you know, okay, the landlords do it, bank does it. This is recently too, and the city of Dearborn Heights does it. That's bullshit or bullcrap, excuse me. And we can't be tolerated here in the city of Dearborn Heights. And I don't think any of these residents that have seen it, you've all seen it on social media. And it just doesn't sit there for one day, sits there for many days or weeks. And then when, you know what, when they come to pick it up, every bag's ripped open. And they have to pick everything up ready and wide open to rodents and it never gets cleaned up one hundred percent. And these people, taxpayers live next door to this, across the street from this stuff. It can't, it's not, it can't be tolerated.
What's your question?
Well, I don't know, there's, in, in, in the cases, what I understand, the city of Dearborn Heights own property, the people were evicted a long time ago and because of legal acts or something like that or whatever, or delays.
Squatters.
They, they were just, they were living in the house until they were legally evicted.
Yeah, so I, I want you to know, under the Federal Housing Administration, that there's a process of eviction that you have to follow. Whether you're the state, the federal government, the city, the county, whomever you are, no entity is allowed to come in and just say, so that means if somebody breaks into your home, Michigan law says, let's just say Tom tells me, well, you, you can stay in my backyard for thirty days. On the thirty first day, if Tom tries to kick me out, he's not allowed. That's actually, that's, that's an actual state law, even though Tom owns that house, but because I've been there for thirty one days, Tom has to go through the process of the court to toss me out. Now, the state law also states, and I, you know, I'm not an attorney, maybe Roger can speak on it, but the things that you throw out for them, I have possession of being able to pick through my stuff outside of the lawn, I believe for about twenty four hours, if I'm not mistaken. So for example, the one that happened on Detroit Street, the guy lost, the guy was a Dearborn Heights resident, I knew Larry well, I've, I've had many conversations with him, even before he was evicted. And um, he, you know, he was trying to save his home, the bank had already purchased it, the sheriffs came in, threw all his stuff. He asked Priority when they came to pick it up, please, these are thirty years of my life, of my belongings. And then now we're stuck with it between a rock and a hard place. This is a guy that's lived in our city for thirty years that just lost, he's got an autistic child and he's got his wife sitting there with them and they're literally living in the streets now. They make twelve hundred dollars in, in social security, he told me, I have nowhere to go. He couldn't afford his payments anymore and all of his thirty years are just sitting in front of the front lawn, he asked Priority, so please, don't, don't throw away all my stuff, can you give me a little bit of time? And I believe Priority honored that for him. Honestly, I know it's a tough decision, I know that no resident wants to look there in front of their home, but a lot of the residents that actually called me in that neighborhood were like, you know, we, we feel bad for this gentleman, he actually slept that night at a neighbor's home. Um, but as far as the city properties go, there's no reason why the city is evicting squatters and saying, well, we're just going to throw all the trash in front of the front lawn and then we're going to wait for Priority to come. What the city should have did, and I agree with Councilman Winslow on this, was brought over a dumpster and emptied everything inside that home and then took that dumpster out of there.
We have to have dumps, we have to have the ordinance for that, I'm working on that right now. And the, the gentleman on Detroit Street, Priority, it wasn't until four days after Priority came out there that he asked them not to go through this stuff. And it had already been just tore apart. There was, I mean, I feel sorry for the guy, but when, when Priority came out there, actually it might have been more than four days after it was sitting out there. The stuff was spewed all over the whole property, it was, it was terrible, you know? But anyway, that's, that's all I've got to say right now.
Thank you, Tom.
Council chair.
Yes, sir. Chair.
So I want to speak as a resident first, then as a council. Uh, sans, sans John Daly, Dearborn Heights. Uh, at the last meeting, I actually voted to place the fire station.
Um. There's nothing from the audience, please.
I voted to approve the fire station, that was the deciding vote. And when I made that decision, the condition was that I would be involved in the process from A to Z. Whether it's meetings, consultations, design, everything from A to Z. The city, the administration and the engineer walked out of this room with ears closed, like nothing happened. Sent an email to him the day of, they had a meeting, going over what's going on, we're not invited. I get an email back from the city attorney saying, I will not be a part, a party to these meetings and I will not be involved until the contract's put in front of us. Tonight I'm asking the city council, and I sent this into an email to Roger and he's been waiting on it, and I'm going to, I'm going to uphold. And I'm going to, I'm, I'm going to uphold my word, what I say. And what I'm saying tonight is, I'd like to suspend the rules. Add the motion back to rescind the motion. I want to rescind my vote. Um, and we can go back until the administration realizes. The authority and the conditions that the council has are valid at their report. You don't dictate the mayor, corporation council, nor our engineer. Or anybody dictates what conditions we put on votes. And since that, we're going to wait, I'm going to rescind my vote and we'll vote on it down the road. And the fire department knows that if I can build a montage mall in the city, I would. But we're not going to give them a box the way that this administration and the engineer wants. We want oversight, we don't want the same exact failed projects going on with the city with this administration. So I ask the council tonight to put the fire, fire station, uh, motion back on because I want to rescind.
Rescind.
Rescind my vote. And we'll go there and we'll, and we'll wait until to see what happens in the near future. Maybe when there's a new administration in office.
Council, council chair. Uh, I'm going to go to Roger and then I'm going to.
And council chair, I spoke as a resident, I'm going to speak as a council.
Okay, go ahead.
Two things. Number one is, um, for Mr. Cooper. I, I have a question, uh. About an agenda item, but I wanted to, I want, I wanted to put in comments. Are anything for B S and A cloud going coming out of general fund or any department? Are taken away from any hirings of any department? Okay, once we get to that item, we're going to put that on the record, okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Roger, go ahead.
Yes, council chair, um, in terms of the, um. We did identify, uh, five properties with squatters. One, we're in a lawsuit with the other four, we took legal action. The court officers, um, not only brought dumpsters to clear out the properties, but also put padlocks so people couldn't get back in. And do any vandalism to the properties, any items. The court officer actually stood outside and supervised a lot of the removals. I think it was done diligently and they've had a, a process that they've been doing for years. Um, in any case, uh, as to councilman, uh, Saab's statement. Um, I think the charter provides for the mayor to provide a count, a contract first and bring it to council. The reason being that if councilman Saab and I wrote him, I specifically said, do not get involved in the negotiations. And the reason is, is a conflict of interest. If he gets involved in the negotiations and A to Z as he claims, then he has to stop and vote on it later on. How can you turn around and say, okay, I'm loo, looking at this objectively? But you were part of the negotiations and the settlement, there's a conflict of interest. Your role as the charter is, in the, since the charter is to read it and vote on it. If you start getting involved in the negotiations and it's challenged later on, they'd say that vote was, was biased. And that you had influence on how the council would vote to approve something you negotiated. That's why I said it's not your role to get in, in that, uh, that part of the negotiations or the preparation of the contract. I would trust the people who you've appointed, the directors who are able to negotiate and handle their professionals to do their job. You may not agree with it. So when it comes to you as a contract and you say, no, I don't like this, I don't like this. That's your time to say, okay, stop this, don't vote on it. But when you start interjecting yourself into it, saying, I know every aspect of this, I've been involved in an aspect of it. Then you turn around and have to vote on it, that's a conflict of interest. That's why I said, you do what you want to do, you put it up again, but you're subjecting us to liability.
There's nothing from the.
That's up to you. That's, that's up to you. That's what I'm saying.
Council chair.
Yes, I'm sorry, councilman, please. Roger, you all done here?
I am, sir.
Thank you so much. I'm going to go to councilman, I'm out of there, I'm going to go back.
Thank you, council chair. I wanted to ask the madam clerk, is it, would be like rescinding his vote only or we're going to be all voting on it? Because to be honest, I think I, um, I want to echo councilman Saab too. I, I felt comfortable when he's going to be overseeing all the meetings, but since he was, uh, denied the fact to be in the meetings, I think I'm going to probably.
What you would have to do is suspend the rules.
Add the motion back on there.
You would have to rescind the motion, which I looked it up. Twenty-five, three, twenty-six. And that, so that would nullify that.
You have to.
Well, if it passes, if it's rescinded, then it's gone. You can't change your vote from a previous meeting.
Okay.
But you can rescind the motion.
Okay.
And then if you choose to.
Re-add it back on if we want to. Thank you.
Council chair.
Yes.
Councilman, are you all set?
Yeah, almost.
So just, just for clarification, so, I mean, this corporation, Roger always spins stuff around. I would never said once that I want to negotiate on behalf of anything. It's called oversight. And it's because we kind of figure and see what kind of contractors we're getting in the city, who knows who and who knows what and who's benefiting this and who's benefiting that. So for us to stand up and, and protect taxpayer money and, uh, protect our first responders because the conditions they're currently living in. To spin it and say, I don't want to be in a negotiation because it's, I'm, 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 I said I want to sit in these meetings, then I said I want to talk in these meetings. But the fact that we got this email and we got this much, uh. The word I'm looking for is, 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 we got this much pushback that, no, stay in your role. But I'm going to stay in my role and we're going to remove it. And that's one less thing the administration has to worry about until the next, hopefully the next administration comes in.
All right, guys, that, let's, I'm, I'm done with the back and forth. This is public comments. Anyone else in the audience? Seeing now we're going to go to Zoom, can we have Hiba A. How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in and the street that you live on.
My name is Hiba Al Kafaji. I live on Pardi Avenue in Dearborn Heights. I've had a issue that I've been trying to tackle for a month since April. I have been reaching out to the Public Works Department. I personally come down to Dearborn Heights City Hall to try and resolve the issue. I've received a bill for the water and sewer that is over three thousand dollars. I've attempted to contact the director of the department. And I have gotten in touch with him once only after contacting Councilman Moby Dun. Um, about the issue and he had to put me in direct contact with him personally. But that was the only time he's ever answered me. And since then, I've still been trying to figure out what the issue is, why my bill is so high. I, me and my landlord have personally brought people out to inspect the property. In case there's any issues with the pipes or leaks and there are none. I've attempted to change the meter as the city is suggesting and they've canceled it and will not tell me why. I've attempted to do a meter test with the city and even said to, yes, to pay the two hundred dollar fine. And just to find out on the day of the appointment. That it was canceled by the director of the Public Works Department, John. Um, and when I asked him about it, he also could not give me an answer why. He said he would never cancel the meter test. And to this day, the, at any time I speak to anyone in the city, um, hall office, no one can give me an answer. I should not be paying a bill that I don't have a reason to pay. My bill has never been over one fifty to one seventy a month or every two months, I'm sorry. And now it's over three thousand dollars. Me and my landlord have both tried to speak to someone at city hall and in public works and I am not getting an answer.
Thank you, Hiba, and I know our director is here. I know Mahdi Baydoun is here. Um, I don't know if there's a way we can get her information, madam clerk. Hiba.
I think she can, um, she can text you.
Hang on, Hiba, you have my cell phone number, right?
Yes, I do.
Text me real quick. I'm going to get it over to Mahdi Baydoun and I'm going to get it over to John and I'm going to put us all in a conversation. And hopefully the, I mean, look. I got to tell you, and I'm not saying taking sides here. John does a very good job at answering his phone. He, I think he's just been overly worked right now. It's, it's, it's the season and I'm not making an excuse, but I'm going to get us all back on the conversation. There may be a little bit of his department, maybe a little bit of the controller's department. And, and regardless, I'm going to put us all together and we'll have those conversations and we'll move from there. Can you just text me real quick?
Yes, I will.
Mahdi, can you also shoot me a text? Because I don't think I have your number saved. Thank you. And I'll get us all in the conversation. I'm sorry that it led to this.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Next up, we have iPhone. Please state your name, the city you reside in and the street that you live on.
Good afternoon. My name is Hassan Jamal.
How you doing, sir?
I'm doing fine. I am, I am, my name was brought up regarding resolution nine A. Yes, I do confirm that I was the one when I was the director for the budget compliance and grant. The one point six million that resulted from plant more auditing the county. A particular, uh, C S O, uh, bond. And that was discovered, we started back in twenty-one. It should be in by then, there's a process. Talking to, uh, executive, talking outside, the, there is a process. The process goes by the starting day. If there is a legal issue, the legal department will talk, they will have a result, they will have a report. The report should be brought back to the city council and based on that, you move that. There are a process, process, not, you know, certain council, certain mayor. Certain executive talk to each other on an, on, on an event. That does not, you are not lobbying. Those are specific legal documentation over a page of one point six million dollars. Please go ahead, approve Madame Treasure to go through the legal. Or whatever it is to get the result. If we have to wait, you gotta wait. But there is no, it's only pieces here, pieces there, but no official. I was, I was involved in it. I'm proud of it. I discovered that one point six million dollars and I like the city. You know, this is, this is my community when I live outside. But I like you to take care of it, make sure to secure those money for the resident of the Dearborn Heights. Which I have a lot of friends and family did over here.
Thank you, sir.
Have a great day.
Your time is up. Thank you so much. Uh, how you doing, Margaret? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Margaret King Mayfair Street, Dearborn Heights. I just have a question, um. It just like with what Mr. Saab was bringing to the attention of wanting to be informed with the golf course. Shouldn't all city council members have the right to be informed with that? It would make us residents, maybe if we try to call and can't get through, we could get, Mr. Saab could be informed. To help us know what's going on and to keep that transparency and communication going through the city. Because that is very, very important. That's all I have to say. Thank you guys so much. Have a good night.
Thank you so much. All right, now the public comments are over. Anyone else? Thank you. Now we have fund transfers and current claims. Councilman Saab.
I'm with the Dearborn Heights City Council. Approve current claims and A C H wire transfer six dash one through dash, six dash sixteen and six, and six dash eighteen through six dash forty, yes.
Support. Motion made by Councilman Saab, second by Councilman, uh, sorry, Councilman Ahmad. Any discussions on that?
Council chair.
Thanks for the. Uh, councilman Ahmad.
Thank you, council chair. I just want to discuss about the Amazon, uh, let's, I don't know if you guys are okay with it.
I'm not.
That's the backup or we can just take it off?
I, I'd like to be take it off and send that, send the backup. I mean, look, this isn't something we've asked one time, it's not something we've asked two times. So I don't care if it's ten dollars, twenty dollars, at the end of the day, it's electronic. Take a screenshot, flip it on, every time somebody buys something, take a screenshot and just email it. It's legit. You being lazy, and I don't mean, I don't mean, uh, the, our controller. I mean, anyone that's not, anybody that's using or purchasing this, that's not sending it over, it's you just being lazy. Legit being lazy.
Uh, council chair, since, since we're talking about backup, what about artistic, uh, I know we asked about the pictures before. I don't know if, uh, director, Dansey, do you still, do you have the pictures electronically for all the properties being cut? Physically?
They did, and you heard Tom saying that he gave it to them and somebody misplaced them.
Council chair, it is part of their contract that it should be included because councilman Hassan Ahmed asked them to be included, so it was included in the contract.
I know it's twenty twenty-five. I mean, if they can just do it electronically, I mean. But since you, council chair and councilman Winston talked to them, if you can just, I don't know. Um, please send the electronic please so we can see it. Because we can't every time go to John's office and look at him.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Saab.
Um, can I add an item? Or just on the rules that I know, just.
No, this is, this is. This is claims, we'll do that at the end.
No, it's.
It's, okay, I have a quick one. I spoke with the resident, uh, number fifty-two, urban tree trimming, sixteen hundred dollars. Uh, it's for Detroit Street. Nothing was, there was no backup on it other than the bill. This is the second time we played the sixteen hundred dollars. I think it's a duplicate. Uh, so I'm going to ask madam clerk and, and Dansey to please look into this before we pay them. Because we already paid sixteen hundred dollars for urban tree cutters at, on Detroit Street, uh, for the same exact amount. And now we're paying it again. So it's the same exact backup, with just a different date. And. I, I don't have any, I don't have any information on it. Check it, same exact address, same exact bill twice. Uh, so I'm going to, I'm, I asked that fifty-two is being removed on there.
Council chair?
Yes.
I just looked at the last minute, the last minutes that you just approved. Through claims and actually there were two for the same amount for urban tree trimming. I don't know what they were for, but one was for sixteen hundred and one was for forty-six hundred.
Yeah.
So there's actually two that are the same exact amount.
All right, can we just remove thirty-four and thirty-five?
I'm sorry. You said there was.
Thirty-four, yeah.
Last meeting?
Yeah, I'm looking at the last, June twenty-fourth.
I'm sorry, thirty-four as well.
It's a long one.
I'm looking at thirty-four and thirty-five. Thirty-four and thirty-five are the same exact amount.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes. Okay, can we eliminate those two?
Yes.
But we also had that bill on six twenty-two. Yeah. Thank you. Any other discussion? So, Councilman Saab, would you like to amend your motion?
Yes, I'd like to remove thirty-four and thirty-five.
Okay.
And, uh. And thirty-eight.
Anyone else?
And you're good with artistic?
Councilman Ahmad.
You're good with artistic?
Yes, please, I'm sorry.
You're good with artistic? Okay.
But I still think, I mean, and I, and I, and one of the reasons why is councilman, uh, once from L B. We owed artistic for almost a year and a half. We did not pay these people. And that all this was submitted to the administration. Why isn't the administration sending it to us? I don't know. Do we penalize the contractor that's doing his job? And it just said that this is where it's become.
At the end of the day, council chair, it's, uh, like I said, twenty twenty-five, we need electronic pictures, not physical.
Yeah, I mean, even if you give electronic pictures, they're not going to sell them to us.
No, no, I mean, John can send them to us because he, it's being sent to John. I mean, if he, director, if he uses a camera, he can with every picture, put the date and put the address for, on the picture. I mean, I used to do it, I, for ten years I did my own properties and my runners used to do it, like fifteen years ago. So this, this, I mean, he does so many properties, he need to do it. I mean, he's not making pennies here, he's making good money, so, thank you.
Anything else? All right, with the elimination of thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-eight.
Yes.
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
There is no fifty-two.
I'm sorry, I was looking at a different one. It was fifty-two the last time.
All right.
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Barb. Next up is consideration of bids, Sessor Comer, bid award, commercial appraisal services.
Council chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for commercial appraisal services to Fromm and Widmer. Widmer Inc. For a total cost not to exceed fourteen thousand. And return the bid, bonds that unsuccessful bidders. In addition, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city. And authorize the mayor and controller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from account one oh one. Two hundred eight one seven zero zero zero, of which the current budget is twenty-five thousand as outlined in seven dash A.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by, um, Councilman Breyer. Any discussion?
Council chair.
Councilman.
Um, I'm looking at this bid, I'm sorry, uh, Sessor Kim, um, I'm trying to call you earlier today. Uh, but I'm looking at those bids and, um. One of them is like fifty-five hundred, the minimum bid, just for the, for the, for the appraisal itself. And if you, I'm just trying to add up the difference between fifty-five hundred and fourteen thousand. That would, would, would the hourly fee for preparation, if, if it goes to trial. That's about thirty-eight hours, do you think, I mean, you can come up with. The lady in yellow.
Hello.
Do you, you, you think it's going to take thirty-eight hours for the appraisal to prepare for trial? But that's what I'm saying.
Don't think it will, but he just gives a cap out, so that way.
Don't think it will, but he just gives a cap out, so that way if.
No, no, I understand, even I emailed, um, Mr. Widmer and he was nice enough to email me back very professional right away.
He's great, yeah, he's communicative, that's why I've enjoyed working with him previously.
Just the way I look at it right now, it's like there's about fifteen hundred difference just for the appraisal itself.
And so, this is another big box. I don't know if you guys have heard, I mean, this has been happening for decades now in Michigan and it's happening all over. These massive corporations hire shark lawyers and they just appeal everything. Um, and so they're going after Target. And so I've been in communication with a couple other cities and they're doing this everywhere. And it's kind of one of those things where you either roll over and you say, sure, your target is now worth thirty dollars a square foot, because that's what they offered us. Um, which they're saying the Target building on Ford Road is worth one point seven million dollars. So, um.
And how much are we assessing it for?
I don't have that on me, but it's more than that, I promise. Um, I think we're at like fifty dollars a square foot, as opposed to thirty.
We got people on Duck Theater, their homes are worth more than their property.
I know, I know. And so I was looking at some of the reports that they, some of the appraisals that they are referencing and they're looking at buildings on like Chesterfield Township and using those as reference and just, they're federal companies that don't really know our area at all. Um, but the reason I, I prefer working with Widmer is because I know he's gone to trial on these things before. He has a track record with them and we are already working with him in our, uh, assessing for tribunal. And so there, he's already familiar with our attorneys and vice versa. So I was just hoping to continue that relationship, um.
I mean, I totally understand, but the, uh, we're here just to save, I mean, financially, we're not in good standing, so whatever we can save for the residents, that's why we're here for. I mean, the way I look at it, I would probably go with the lowest bid and put a cap at ten thousand in case they need to go to trial. Um.
I, I haven't done research on if she's, if the other company has won in court on these big box things. And so I, I, I know John's work, that, that's really where I'm coming from, I, I can't reference, but.
If I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, thank you so much to our assessor. I know you and I had this conversation, kinda said like, hey, like, with our chief of staff.
Did get the price down lower than, than before.
identifying where the budget is coming in from.
Yep.
The reality is, I know you know somebody and you're probably comfortable with working because you've worked with them in the past. It's also a lot more expensive than what we can actually afford. And, and the reality is, as a fiduciary to the city, we can't just say, well, we're gonna use someone because we know this person. Reality is, we have to use somebody and.
Who's gonna win, that's my big thing.
Well, I don't, I don't.
Will they be able to produce the quality of work?
I don't think.
They'll benefit us and actually succeeding in trial over this. Because.
If I may.
Against Hahneman and they have a track record of winning and cities losing.
If, if I may, real quick.
Yeah, of course.
The reality is, I don't think, I mean, I don't really know any of them. But what I do know is what we can afford and what we can't afford. And, and, and the truth is, I don't think anybody's gonna lose on thirty dollars. Because that's not realistic. I don't think, I don't think any court, I don't think any trial is gonna stand before us and come back and say, we agree that one of the bid, and if you don't know this, Target on Ford Road and John Daly is one of the, statistically is proven is one of the busiest targets in the country. And it's, and it's actually, um, uh, uh, one of the most updated and up-cup targets in the country. But to say it's thirty dollars a square foot, I think, I can argue and say, no, this is not thirty dollars a square foot.
Yeah, they.
But I'm not gonna go there, and I think anybody that's put on an R F Q that says, hey, I can take this on, I don't think, I don't think it's in our permission to say, we're gonna doubt these people that they can win. I think it's our job to say, okay, if you can do it and you've done this type of work, we don't even know if, if she's one or not, because you told me you didn't research her, or, or the other person.
So one thing to account for is that Fromm and Widner has a cap on there, so if this big box store target and the lawyers decide to drag this out, um, then the city could potentially, uh, spend more with, uh, the third one, which bid lower starting amount, but bills expenses without a cap. So Fromm and Widner, it's only, uh, not to exceed fourteen thousand, meaning that no matter, if it takes a year for this to settle, you can only pay fourteen thousand. If it takes a year to settle with the other person, she's gonna be billing two twenty-five per hour.
With a cap, a cap of ten thousand dollars.
What'd you say?
No cap.
You can't.
No, no, I'm saying, I'm, I'm suggesting when I put a cap at ten thousand.
You can't.
If I ask you, what, I can't?
You can't, because they bid, that's their bid. You can only accept the bid as they presented.
Put it, we send it back to them, if they don't like it, we can, we can bring it back in.
So what you can do is.
Absolutely. I mean, if they don't accept it, no, if they don't accept it.
You can, you can negotiate with them.
Yeah.
So if you want to, um.
Maybe, I just, I don't see it, if it goes to trial, I don't see thirty-eight hours just to go to trial, if it goes to trial.
But depending on.
Work of thirty-eight hours at two twenty-five or two two seventy-five, I think it's charging. Um, I mean, I, I don't see thirty-eight hours worth of work just to go to trial for an appraisal. You know what I mean, it's not.
I'm not.
Going to the Supreme Court here, it's a tribunal.
I understand, I'm not a, I'm not a.
I mean, how mu, how mu, I'm looking at the, the taxes. How much do they?
You also have to remember that this is ongoing taxes, so depending on the person you choose and the appraisal that you have, the court can decide a certain value which can dictate a recurring tax amount. And if you have a proven track record with somebody who's done the work before, then that means the taxation on that property will stay at a better level than possibly what we would get in another person. I thought, the, the thing with an R F P is that it's not always the lowest bidder. You account for qualification, you count for the qualification.
No, but cap set shouldn't even check if, uh, they qualify or not.
It's not that I didn't check if they qualify, I just found someone else's quality to, I'm not here to disparage other people's work. So that's what I'm not gonna stand up here and do. I just know what work I've seen that I believe can do what we need that to do, that's all.
I'm just gonna be honest with you, the, the, the thing with this is that because there's no cap, this big box store in the store has unlimited funds to hire lawyers. And they can drag it out, you know how lawyers act. If they're paid per hour, they're gonna keep dragging this out as long as possible. They're gonna try making it so that, oh, appeal this, appeal that. Even if the court decides, um, let me appeal it, then you're gonna have to go and hire this person again and say, hey, they appealed it, let's, uh, we have to pay you again. Um, Fromm and Widner, like she said, has a track record with the city and has done work with the city and, uh, has done quality work with the city. The thing with, uh, these big box stores is the city relies on these type of taxations to provide funds for general fund. If you, um, if you put that in jeopardy because you are selecting a low bidder for fifteen hundred dollars less, that taxation can be like three thousand less per year.
Why are we assuming that the lowest bidder is automatically gonna lose? Like you're painting this thing like the lowest bidder is gonna lose. When we just sat here and said, one, there's two things that we.
It's not the lowest bidder, she doesn't have a cap on her expenses.
We can put the cap, if that bidder does not like it, you can bring it back to us.
So here's the thing, you can also then put the cap to the other person as well and say, hey, would you be willing to?
Or you, or you could do is you could take the first bidder and say.
Yeah, you can negotiate. You can, you can negotiate with the bidders under R F P. Now, if you feel, if you want to say, hey, please go back to these bidders and negotiate for a, a cap, a certain cap that the city can pay, then she can go ahead and do that. But I do wanna give you a heads up that it's crunch time in the sense that they, and they are preparing to go to court for the appraisal value.
Anyways, we have, we have a motion on the table, what do you wanna do here, Councilman?
I mean, I wanna suggest go with the lowest bidder, put a cap of ten thousand. If, uh, if that bidder does not like it, they can bring it back to us. That's me, I just, I don't see it thirty-eight hours going, to go to trial. You have that needs thirty-eight hours.
Yeah, I don't either. Anyone else from the council?
Counselor Chair?
Miss Ma'am, Councilwoman?
Yeah, it might be about four thousand more, but that's the most it can be. If we go with one that's, doesn't have a cap, they can get to be outrageous. It's a game they're playing, and I just think they're gonna wanna change our P and if we're under crunch time, then we're, we're here, we can lose a lot of money in tax base.
Even a thousand dollars per year can be twelve thousand dollars on the twelve month.
It's court, when, when they're going to court?
September. Our, our, our valuation reports are due by September and they were just appealing twenty-four and they tacked on twenty-five now. So we also have to, that's part of it, is that's for two appraisals. One based on the value of December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three and one based on the value as of December thir, first of twenty twenty-four. So they're doing two commercial appraisals in one.
Did, did, did our, did our bid request for limits at all, when you sent out this R F Q?
So.
I don't know.
Go ahead.
So there, when you do an R F P or an R F Q, you can't put a limit, you allow the bidders to determine their terms. Uh, you say, what is your price for this and what is your price for this?
Familiar with an R F Q, man.
Yeah. Uh, so with this R F Q, you say, uh, what is your pricing for initial? And what is your pricing for additional fees as trial and, uh, court?
I don't know, I just feel like.
I'm, I'm gonna be honest with you. I, I trust the assessor's judgment and judgment.
Came too, but we're here just to save them.
No, but keep in, keep in mind, the, the amount of money you're spending extra and maybe four thousand or fifteen hundred will be.
Where are we getting this money from also?
It's already, uh, budgeted out of that budget line item that they stated.
Counselor Chair.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman.
Um, no, like I want to say again, four thousand dollars is not a lot of money considering the fact of how much we can lose in a tax base. If they go to court and the person we picked is, is not. I mean, we want somebody that's gonna be solid in their bid, you know, in what they say the property is worth. We can't afford to lose it, it's a big box, we don't have a lot of big boxes in our city and it's potentially a lot of tax money.
Let the Councilman finish, please.
What happened?
No, I just want you to finish.
I'm.
Done? Okay, I just want you to, I just wanna go back to my, my last statement.
Sure, go ahead.
We're continuing to paint. And because they're the lowest bidder, they're gonna lose, we gotta stop doing that. Go ahead.
Yeah, and the, having done some tax appeals and this is a big issue, there's a Michigan Supreme Court decision regarding the stores counting, not the, not counting the inventory in the store. Um, but, uh, and former Councilwoman, uh, Jemana Judah is very experienced. Uh, very experienced in front of the, um, Michigan Tax Tribunal.
You, you know her?
Yes.
She's good?
Yes.
Councilwoman?
Former Councilwoman. She was on the city council.
Yes?
Yes.
Uh-huh. I used to work with you at Michigan.
Counselor Chair? Yes, sir.
Uh, we had an issue with, uh, Home Depot a few years ago, who, who handled that?
Fromm and Widmer, same guy.
That turned out favorable to the city, okay, thank you.
Um, and just in case anyone was wondering, uh, the summer tax for twenty twenty-four for Target was a hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars and the winter tax was fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars. They are a substantial taxpayer, so I'm trying to preserve our tax base the best I know how. So, doing my best to keep our money here.
No, go ahead, we'll do one last one, go ahead.
Question, um.
Yes.
If they do get it at, you said thirty dollars a square foot as opposed to fifty, what would be the difference they'd be paying in taxes? How much do we, do we have to ask to lose?
So right now, we have the value of the property for last ye, for this year, the assessed value, which is half at two million, seven hundred and seventy-five, or two million, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. Or, yeah, fifty-five thousand, five hundred dollars, sorry, lots of numbers. Um, so they're paying taxes based on two point six to seven million. Um, they're saying that it is worth a lot less than that. And so they're, they were putting it at the to, like the value at like one point seven million. So that's substantially less than we have it at.
I mean, in dollars, you're saying eleven thousand something and fifty-seven thousand something, I'm, I'm going more towards the tax base.
That's what it would be under the.
You know.
That wouldn't be exactly.
So we're actually even fighting about the size of the building in court, so that's part of it. So we don't agree on, on property sizes and so they wanna go with their number, but they're, I don't know what they're measuring. They're saying the building is not the same size we have it at.
I forget, it actually goes even further behind.
Oh, the property does, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's pond, retention pond and all that back there.
Because, yes, the retention pond, because they haven't gated, you go to the actual back, but it still goes behind before they actually gets, before it actually gets over to the homeowners.
Yeah, the property is eight points, uh, eight point five acres, so it's a very large parcel.
Like, like Councilman Saab's backyard.
So, yeah, I mean.
Front yard.
They, I mean, they would be paying like half, less than half of what they're paying now, if, if they kind of.
Than half, we have a sense of losing a lot of money.
Yeah, and, and I mean, they've, they're, they're everywhere, they're appealing everywhere. I talked to Lebonia, I talked to a bunch of different cities and Hahneman, this, the attorney, they're not just doing Targets, they're doing Home Depots, they're doing all these big boxes, that's what they do, they do them all at once and they try to compare them all to each other.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Chair, real quickly, if I may.
Yeah.
Um, they, they are proven, like you said, with the Home Depot issue, uh, I was aware of that and they resolved that in favor of the city, so they have experience in dealing it. And I think we spent over four thousand dollars debating this in the last twenty minutes, so.
Happy to work with whoever you guys go with, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Chair, I'm gonna change my motion to award the lowest bidder with the ten thousand cap. Uh, if I have a second, we can take it a bit, if not, you can.
I'll second.
We gotta hold on this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, no, no.
You have motion on the table?
Oh, amended my motion to change it to the.
And if, and if it doesn't pass, then you haven't, then you have the, you re-read.
Yeah, I amended my motion, Councilman Saab, just seconded.
That was Nancy.
I seconded.
Seconded by Nancy to see the thousand dollars? Okay, all of, so amending your motion to go with the lowest bidder with a cap of ten thousand dollars?
Ten thousand.
Motion made by Council. Amended by, can we do that?
Can you please name the bidder?
Councilman Ahmad, oh, name the bidder?
Name the bidder?
Hmm, yeah.
Uh, Judy and Associate.
Okay, motion amended by Councilman.
Do, do you want me to do the whole thing or?
There it is.
Okay, uh, Counselor Chair, I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for commercial appraisal, uh, services to Judy and Associate, uh, not to exceed ten thousand dollars and to, and return the bids, bond to unsuccessful bidders. In addition, authorize the mayor or clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city and authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and treasurer to issue payment from account one oh one, two hundred eight one seven zero zero zero, of which the current budget is twenty-five thousand, as outlined in seven dash A.
Second. Motion made by Councilman, uh, Ahmad to amend his motion, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion?
Counselor Chair?
Yes, sir.
Or, um, anybody that's in, in this type of business, on city council, are they allowed to vote on something like this?
Yeah, I don't think there's one appraiser here on this, on this panel.
Or I know, I, I didn't know if he was an appraiser.
No, I'm not an appraiser.
Being an appraiser, you have to have a hundred and twenty credit hours of college, uh, and it's like, it's like ten thousand hours of whatever. There's a short.
Okay, well, I guess we're going against the professionals' opinion, advice. You know, I mean, this is the person that deals with the city and, uh.
We have a proven track.
Proven track record.
Council, you can just vote on it, if it doesn't work.
I know, I will, yeah.
Yeah. This might not even pass for now, let me come back and reread it back. Right? All in favor to choose Judith and Associate Inc., please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
Denise Malinowski, Maxwell?
No.
That's Ahmad?
Yes.[1653.86]
Hassan Saab?
Yes.
Nancy Brier?
No.
Robert Coniston?
Yes.
Tom Wenzel?
No.
Yimobidum?
Yes.
Motion carries four three.
Next up is seven B Orange and Enforcement and Animal Control Director Lafive, bid award Orange Department Vehicle Replacements.
Counselor Chair?
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the ordinance department vehicle thirty six months lease agreement between the city. And blank and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. In addition, authorize the mayor and the comptroller or clerk to sign a necessary warrants. And the treasurer issue payment from account number one O one, four two six, eight one eight, zero zero zero, of which the current budget is thirty seven thousand, five hundred dollars. In addition, provide the mayor also, provided that the mayor also authorizes any such payments. As a necessary expense. And the council authorized warrants to be issued from GL account. One O one, four twenty six, eight one eight, zero 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 for the payments of the services outlined in seven B.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Brier. The Honorable Councilman Brier.
Council Chair?
Yes, sir.
I just want to reread that over again.
What did you miss?
So of which. The current budget is thirty seven thousand, five hundred. In addition. Provided the mayor also authorizes any such payment.
Yeah, that's.
As a necessary expense.
Guys, please, nothing from the council.
The city council authorized warrants. For the payment of these services. I mean, we're just paying off a lease. Why would there be any any additional expenses?
I didn't like the wording on it.
Yeah, the the wording, the wording is supposed to be authorize the mayor, the comptroller or clerk to sign the warrants and authorize the treasurer to pay. That way the lease doesn't have to go in front of council every single time.
So how about we read this over and delete the last uh, sentence, because this is giving the mayor the full authority into this account.
Hmm, no.
The last sentence, in addition, provided the mayor also authorizes any such payment as a ne- necessary expense.
Yeah.
After the clerks uh, and treasurers uh.
I agree with you. I I don't agree with the wording. If you want changing it, I I'm agreeing with that. If you want to change the wording, be.
We'll change wording. Doesn't even say which one we're going with.
Yeah, it doesn't.
Right, so I think, uh, I mean, the director, he gave us different options and I think he just left it for us to decide. I mean, the from the from I'm looking at him, I think going with, I think Taylor Ford. Would be the best bet, which is uh, unless if you don't correct me, Director Lafive. Uh, it's for thirty six months for a lease of uh, for the escape, that would be four hundred and eighty dollars for thirty six months. Is that, am I correct?
Yes, that was one of the quotes we got.
That would be the cheapest. I mean, from looking at the other quotes, I think we had five O seven, that's for an escape, four eighty, that's the one I'm looking at, and five forty seven. Now that's for a Bronco.
Uh, I gave you two to choose from. I we don't care what we get, like I said.
What's more comfortable for you?
Well, the the Bronco's a little bigger when we haul stuff like we did the dog, the twenty seven dogs, we had to put carriers in it, so we had to take a couple cars. Besides the trucks, I mean, size wise are not much difference, but like I said, we need the vehicle so we can hire the three people we're about to hire. Which are in the testing process right now, so I'm not gonna be picky. Whatever you guys decide.
And what color are these? All blue?
Um, this is gonna be my vehicle and then my vehicle, which Tom saw today is an escape, will be going into the fleet and be marked. So they're all escapes. Only difference is is mine's a different color, but they'll all be escapes that way and they'll all be marked same, so.
What color is this? This is us, this we're looking at.
I don't remember.
Six of, how many?
So the one from Taylor Ford is five forty seven a month?
No, it's four eighty a month.
Four eighty, that's the cheapest. We're talking about sixty dollars difference in each one.
We're talking about the Bronco, not the escape.
No, we're talking about the escape.
Escape, but you got a Bronco.
Escape all wheel drive.
Drive activity, yeah.
Yeah.
That's exactly what you said last time, Councilman, you wanted everything, all the fleet to match.
Yeah.
Correct.
So how many we're getting right now? Some, how many uh?
How many cars?
We have six right now.
Okay.
And like I said, we have a part timer who's in one of them, so when we hire the three full timers, I'm gonna need at least this vehicle to get everybody.
Only one?
This is one vehicle, just so I can get everybody in a car when we hire the three people. We had seven cars, one was totaled last year, so basically this is replacing the one that was totaled to get my fleet back up to seven. And we have an F one fifty that one of the guys drive. So that is another vehicle. Like I said, this will get everybody in a car when we hire the three people.
You only approving one though.
And we have plenty, like I said, there's plenty of money in the account to cover it, plus there's extra in case we ever do need another vehicle, there should be at least enough for another vehicle if we hire the last person.
Do we need the last vehicle for the for this price? I mean, it's worth it.
Like I said, if I can get at least one now, so I can hire the three people, I'll be ecstatic.
Let's just hire this one right now and come back, yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah, let's let's go. I'd like you to, you know, choose the one from Taylor Ford, Councilman. You're you're okay with that?
Ford Escape.
Um.
Taylor Ford Escape, uh, Taylor Ford, the Escape, all wheel drive.
So.
Eighty dollars a month.
So I'll reread this. Just the ordinance. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the ordinance department vehicle thirty six months lease agreement between the city and Taylor Ford. The two thousand twenty five Ford Escape, all wheel drive active. Uh, VIN number ending in five two one nine, four hundred eighty dollars a month at a thirty six months lease. And authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. On behalf of the city, in addition, authorize the mayor and the comptroller or clerk. To sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from account number one O one. Four two six, eight one eight, zero zero zero, of which the current budget. There's thirty seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
And all.
As 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 outlined in seven B.
I resecond.
Resecond it, but do we have to add an authorize the mayor comptroller?
I it's already up here.
Okay. Okay, and then we're going with the escape for eighty a month, correct?
Yep.
Mm hmm.
All right, all in favor, please state it. Oh, I'm sorry, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is Crestwood High School's Homecoming Parade twenty twenty five.
Council Chair?
Councilman Saab.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council grant permission to Crestwood High School to hold their annual homecoming parade on Friday, October third, twenty twenty five at five thirty with staging beginning at five P M as outlined in eight A.
Support.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is reports from city officials. City Engineer Deeb, Drinking Water, State Revolving Fund and Clean Water State Revolving Fund Project.
Council Chair?
Councilman Saab.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council authorized the mayor and the comptroller and clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment for the signed contracts for the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. And the Clean Water Revolving Funds Project outlined in nine A.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Brier. Any discussion?
Council Chair?
Councilman?
Okay, can we set this up for a study session?
Um, well, right now there's a motion on the table. Do you want to amend your motion?
Yeah, I want to amend my motion, take this to a study session.
Okay. Motion to take this to a study session. Do I do I hear a second?
Support.
Seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Well, there's a motion here to uh, refer this to a study session for City Engineer Deeb Drinking Water State Revolving Fund and Clean Water State Revolving Fund Project Payment. I mean, I just want you guys to know that this is already have a contract that has been approved. This is just, this is issuing the payment.
So, is that engineer?
They're voting on the other thing first.
I just want you guys to know that this was already approved. This is, this is just us making the payment, but I'm.
So, um, when you guys first approved the contracts for Ferguson Water Works to do the water meter replacements. And bid gear contractors to do the water main replacements, the clause saying uh, authorize the mayor or comptroller and clerk to sign the necessary warrants. You 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 know what?
Yes.
Um. The problem is that, as you can see on the claims today, we had bid gear contractors. We had to wait to pay him two and a half weeks because. The invoice was submitted right after the deadline for the previous agenda and then he's asking, well, why do I have to wait for payment? The council already approved. The project and I'm doing the work and it's being authorized and reviewed. Um, so I I asked uh, Engineer Devin Mariana to put this motion on. So that we can at least get these paid and vendors paid in timely manner, because these payments uh, span one to two months. Uh, and they could be upwards of two million dollars per payment. And these vendors are fronting this money in terms of labor materials, so.
I mean.
Allows to pay in a more timely manner.
Yeah, but the problem is is that we're given, we're given these bids an open ended check.
Is what it is. The the contract have limits.
There's no oversight.
The contracts have limits.
Yeah, but there's no oversight on what's being done.
Yeah, but that's that's the engineering, that's on the administration, that's not on.
Yeah, but it's.
You can have oversight on it, but that's not.
No, it's not us having oversight.
I mean, the oversight is the budget.
Make sure everything's getting done.
When you get the budget to actual, there's gonna be a GL line item for water meter replacement, water main replacement, lead liner, lead pipe replacement. The gen, the budget to actual each month will show you the payments up to the amount. So you will be able to say, and I could if you.
I don't think Councilman Saab's talking about the money wise. I think Councilman Saab's talking about the work that's actually being done. He's saying that there's no oversight on the work that.
No, he's saying the open check amount. That's why I just want to make sure.
I mean, he's saying, you know, they have an open check. They can do whatever they want and take their budget. This is gonna bill. Oh, so I want you to know that we have a contract. We're obligated to be.
Council Chair, with respect to you, Mr. Deeb has never come, no, no, I'm just saying, no, I'm going through the chair. I'm saying is that Mr. Deeb has never come forward once and sold just the statistics or or or.
Breakdown.
Or a breakdown of anything that's been done in the city with this uh, with this ma- massive project that the city's undertaken. Now, we're seeing everybody come through and we're paying people, but what's been done? How many meters have been done? How many areas of the from A to C, to D, to E had?
I actually, I actually do the water meter import every uh, week with the. Uh, Representative Ferguson, we average about three to four hundred meters change out per week. Uh, which would put us at a end date of about August twenty twenty.
But who, but who's the oversight on these?
I mean, I technically would be the oversight when you talk about how many meters have been replaced.
Who has oversight on the job sites, job, because I have some residents.
We have Wade Trim as a field engineering contractor, given that we don't have field engineers right now. We have one engineer and a part timer. Um.
How much is their bill?
How much is?
Their bill for a field engineer to be out there so far?
I don't know the exact amount based on the contract. I can get you that value.
Okay. My second thing is, the problem is I have with these contracts that we put out, yes, we're changing people's meters. But you're not hearing about the residents. They're complaining that when they go out there, their valve is bad or something's bad with their line and it's costing them, they want thousands of dollars to fix them because they won't touch anything else past the meter. And the resident gets stuck with.
I had one of those residents reach out to me. Um, I've talked to Ferguson. I don't know the, in the workings of what the company that's changing out the meters, which is Vapo. Uh, because Ferguson isn't the one that changes it out, it's a subcontractor. Um, I don't know what the workings are. Um, they have noted that some of these residents have. Uh, corroded or rusted pipes leading from the meters, so they don't, that's a liability type thing. Like they chained out the meter, but then do that. Um, some residents are saying like, hey, let let me just change out the meter, I don't care, but it's kind of a safety hazard.
Or they're having to call their own plumber, which I understand. I I I have to keep that in mind. Their job is to only install, they're only licensed and insured to do the water meter.
Right, I, we're also out trying to help residents, but also screw residents at the same time.
Yeah, but if.
Yep.
Like, for example, there was a resident that I know called me and said like, my line was broken, it was rusted, they refused to, you know, fix that.
They're not contract. Now the city would have to pay to fix that technically. We would.
She had done calling like multiple different plumbers, one of them doing it for like eighty bucks.
Yeah.
Of all the story is, I see where he's also coming from. Truth is, you're you're gonna have some type of plumbing issue. Plumbing is not uh.
It's not easy, it's not.
Yeah.
I know. The whole point of this is just to pay the uh, contractors on time. Now, we do have, like I said, Wade Trim is a field engineer inspecting and ensuring the accuracy of this uh, work. Um. You are putting that kind of uh, oversight with them as well as Engineer Deeb also assists with oversight, ensuring that the bills match what we're paying.
Any other discussion? We have a motion to refer this back to a study session. Obviously, there's a motion on the table. I I didn't second or put it forward, but I'm not a fan of that. Think like, we have to pay these people to do the work, our city.
But but but. It's not about paying them. This is about giving the okay to keep paying them without without coming in front of council.
No, what we can do is, we want to get an updated information status on what's happening. I can schedule a study session fast, Mr. Deeb, push it up and give us a breakdown with Wade Trim of what has been happening. But I think penalizing this this contractor from getting paid.
I mean, I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm on it. This is more so for the contractor, because when you do a million dollars worth of work and you front the material. As well as the labor to fix water mains, which is not an easy task. That's kind of a burden to them because that's a liability. His accounts receivable is at a sixty day period, but his accounts payable is at a thirty day period.
Yeah, go ahead. We we can go ahead. You can amend your motion to approve it. Uh, per uh, anytime they make a payment to send it to us uh, with updates.
No, I I want I want a presentation from, that's what we pay. Uh, the building department and the engineering department to go out do these projects and, you know, you have a duty too when you pay out money to have oversight what's going on. We have a bill from Wade Trim here for two hundred thousand dollars for a field engineer. Doing what? Have they ever come and represented anybody, say, tell us what they're doing? Do you have any oversight what they're doing? Who's out there on these jobs? How many days are they out there? How many, how do you know they're out there thirty hours a week?
With you, I mean, percent.
That that's something that you're gonna have in your higher contractors to do. It's never gonna be a perfect world where you have somebody watching over the contract. I I.
To pay a third party engineer.
No, I agree with you. I I agree with you, Councilman.
To have a.
It's not perfect.
You'll never get. And and Matty, with respect, you have nothing but respect for you. To have an engineer out there paying um, three, two, three hundred dollars an hour at two hundred thousand dollars for. Uh, what is it, a couple of months? When we can hire two, three engineers, field engineers in the city, does not make sense.
And I agree with you. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you on that point. I'm just.
Guys, I, we're having too much back report. Councilman wants.
Yeah. Um, Councilman Saab mentioned the the language and I've always objected to the language that they put at the end of these uh, motions. Um, how 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 important is that that we pass this this meeting? I mean, it it actually is just a language issue, right, uh, Councilman?
No.
Basically, I mean, I mean, without, for this particular bill, they having the mayor have carte blanche basically on uh, future.
No, no, the one, yeah, the one before that where the ordinance car, yeah, the the all the expense stuff, I took that out. That was not included in the motion. But this now we're talking about uh, the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund.
Yeah, this paid, this bill that Council, uh, Councilman um, Aduan said, this is just a bill that we're paying. Already agreed to contract. I I know where you're coming from though, but uh, you know.
But the but but the thing is, Councilman, like you and I have been driving down, looking at the projects going on in the south end, right? Correct?
Yes.
We know there's workers out there, but we're paying some people hundreds of thousands of dollars to be out there. I don't think I've ever seen one out there.
You should try try find, look into that and see if.
Right, but that's my problem though, is that we're paying company, third party companies to be there representing the city. I don't believe they're there and I'm saying. Where is the oversight on this work and why aren't you coming here telling us? And 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 charts or something? This is what's been done. This is what's paid. All we see is amendments. More added to the bills and more stuff for being removed by from the budget without us knowing.
We will tell you that um.
I agree.
I have to agree uh, to some degree on Councilman Saab. The other day I was in the south end. And I was stuck between um, a ramp truck and somebody pouring cement and there was a bunch of workers to my left. And I said, oh, sir, I'm stuck. Like, and one of the trucks, you know, let me out and he said, it's gonna be about twenty minutes. I said, come on, man, please, I don't want to wait twenty minutes. It's a true story. This happened on Saturday. It was fourth of July weekend on Saturday. And I said, you know, I I really, I don't have twenty minutes to wait. He said, grab on the grass. I said, that's illegal.
That's what D T E says.
I said, that's absolutely illegal. I said, who are you, what are you, what are you doing? You can't be telling residents to drive and vandalize people's grass and properties. I said, you can't do that. I said, who do you work for? Said, I work for myself. And I said, okay, what's your company name? And he gave me a different company name. And I said, I've never heard of this company. I said, who subcontracted you? He said, Proline. I said, so you were never hired by the city of Dearborn Heights? And he said, no. I was hired by Proline, but we hired Proline for a million dollars. Proline tells them, hey, here's two hundred thousand dollars, go do the work and they sit at home with eight hundred thousand dollars in their pocket. Just want to give you guys an update of of kind of some of the oversight. Um, but but this here specifically, the city engineer, the Drinking Water State Revolution Fund, this guy bought the material, did the work and whatnot. So my only thought is, I agree with Councilman Saab. There definitely needs to be a study session of everything that's taken on in the city. Residents need to know. There's no reason why we're not giving public updates from our mayor, from our city engineer. Hey, it's Mr. Deeb, I'm here on Annapolis Street, I'm here on this street, I'm here on Detroit Street, I'm here on Amboy Street. There's no reason why our administration is not talking to the residents. Forget the council, I know you don't like us. Man, you don't like your residents either?
Um.
Councilor.
But but it sucks that we have to beg for some type of update.
Hmm.
You know, but when when the media comes, we're so quick to pull out this long piece of paper and say, look, look, look at the projects we're working on. Look at the project. Where are they? How come the residents don't know? Yeah, man, I'm uh, uh, sorry, man.
Yeah, that's okay.
Councilman Brier.
Why don't we uh, vote on the original one and then decide if we need an amended?
Well, you know what? I don't know, the more see my emotions gets the best of me sometimes. I get it. This guy needs to get paid.
No, man, there's, there's. So so I'm gonna leave it at this. You cannot pay without oversight versus on having work progress payments. You know, you cannot, this is an open ended, this is open ended. Um, I don't think anybody here would agree to have anything open ended.
All right, well, we have a motion on the table to uh, refer this back to administration and to not pay this contractor. Um, and to take it to a study session. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor to send this back? Please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose?
No.
No. And clerk, please take roll call.
Tom Wenzel?
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Hassan Saab?
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Robert Coniston?
No.
Nancy Brier?
No.
Yimobidum?
No.
Motion does carry four to three.
That's the beautiful thing of democracy. Good job, Councilman. Next up. Uh, George, get with me so that we can study this, schedule this to next. Let's uh, let's just put it on next Tuesday, six o'clock. Thank you. Next up is Comptolos, which is project amendment.
Council Chair?
What is it?
The clock before the next meeting?[1755.41]
He said five o'clock before the next meeting.
We could do that. We could do five o'clock for the next meeting. You guys want to take next Tuesday off? I'll give you a break. All right, we'll do, we'll do.
Oh, fine. Before the next meeting?
Right now, five o'clock before the next meeting.
The twenty seventh?
Okay.
Yeah, July twenty seventh.
Twenty seven?
Oh, oh.
Twenty second.
Twenty second, twenty second, I was saying.
But add this still back to the twenty fifth at, at five o'clock. But also add this back also to the next agenda.
Wait.
Thank you.
Do you?
Yeah.
And I'm just asking, a post session for the fifteenth?
You do. We actually can't do it at five o'clock.
Well, that would be, I'm sorry.
It's next week.
That's next week. The special meeting, I just was bringing that to your attention.
All right. We do have a, we have a legal law.
That might not be as tall.
Oh, so we have to be here anyway. What time is it?
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
They don't know that.
Uh, five thirty.
Five thirty.
Yes.
Five thirty.
We can do the study session right after since we're already here. I just do that.
Okay.
What's the date?
What do we hand?
That way.
Next Tuesday, we have a study session and a close session, a, a special meeting at five thirty regarding some legal law.
Immediately followed by the study session for this. And then you'll put the invoice or how, whatever the outcome is in the study session on the twenty second agenda.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Can we get nine B? I guess somebody read nine B.
Yeah, Council Chair.
Go ahead.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the following amendments to the fire department budget and comptroller office budget. Uh, fire budget, uh, department, um, account is.
Fire grant expense?
Start with the next one.
Well, well, fire grant expense, one oh one, three, three, five, nine, four, zero, zero, seven, five. Uh, current budget forty thousand, amended budget one hundred and twenty five thousand, eight hundred, one hundred and eighty four dollars. Amended bu, amended amount, I'm sorry. Amended budget would be one, one hundred sixty five thousand, one hundred eighty four dollars. Remaining balance would be one hundred sixty five thousand, one hundred eighty four dollars. The fire grant revenue account number one oh one, zero, 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 six, three, five, zero, zero, zero. Current budget is forty one thousand, amended amount is one, one hundred twenty five thousand, one hundred eighty four dollars. The amended budget is one hundred sixty six thousand, one hundred eighty four dollars. Remaining budget balance would be one hundred and sixty six thousand, one hundred eighty four dollars. Uh, notes, the fire department gear grant revenue and expenses offset, no fund balance used. Uh, salaries, account number one oh one, two, two, three, seven, oh, six, zero, zero, zero. Current budget, three hundred eighty six thousand, two hundred eighty seven dollars. Amended amount, twenty thousand dollars. Amended budget, three hundred sixty six thousand, two hundred eighty seven dollars. Remaining balance is three hundred sixty six thousand, two hundred eighty seven dollars. Part time, GL account number one oh one, two, two, three, zero, seven, I'm sorry, one oh one, two, two, three, seven, zero, seven, one, zero, zero. Current budget is zero, amended amount is twenty thousand, amended budget is twenty thousand, remaining balance is twenty thousand. Uh, notes, part time employees to cover vacant position responsibilities, no fund balance used is outlined in nine B.
Okay.
Oh, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman, I'm sorry, motion made by Councilman Saab. Uh, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion?
Council Chair.
Yes, Chair.
Thank you, Councilor. Mr. Badun, how, how do you understand the first box? Uh, so there's two accounts. One is an revenue and one is an expense.
So.
So the same amount of money, correct?
Yes.
But the way you posted here, it seems like both of them has the same amount now. Shouldn't we take one from one account, take it to the other?
So with a grant, you increase the expense and increase the revenue. You're not taking from the revenue because the revenue didn't exist in before you did this amendment.
Okay.
So when you, when you are aware of the revenue coming in.
Mm-hmm.
And then you're able to expand that revenue because it's a restricted grant revenue. It's specifically for gear, the, the fire department gear. You increase the revenue account so that increases your uh in, increases the revenue for the year.
Mm-hmm.
But then you expand the same expense, so it's a net zero difference. It's a, it's a, uh, it's a formality amendment, just so at the end of the year, when you look at the budget to actual, you see the revenues increased, but the expenses also increased.
We're talking the same money, the hundred and twenty five thousand.
Yes. Now, if they don't expand it all in this year, then we can make an amendment, we can roll it over to next year and an, and, and amendment.
Okay. Uh, any more discussion? Anyone? Okay, we have a motion on the table by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, moving on to nine C. Director Cooper, B S and A cloud agreement and budget amendments. So I have a motion.
Council Chair.
Councilwoman.
I'll make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approves the software and services agreement for B S and A cloud between the city and B S and A software. Where costs not exceed three hundred and forty eight thousand, three hundred ninety dollars and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants per the payment schedule. And the treasurer to issue payment from account one oh one, two, five, eight, seven, two, eight, zero, zero, one. Additionally, authorize the comptroller to issue the attached budget amendments to cover these. Okay, bear with me, this is long.
Do we have to read all of this or?
It's over twenty lines.
Yeah, just as them.
Okay.
It'll be in the minutes.
Uh, but the note says, B S and A cloud conversion cost amendment, no fund balance used. That's important.
Second.
Yeah, I got a motion by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilman?
Councilman, I have a question for the director. These departments here, this money that's coming out of their three thousand, two thousand, twenty thousand recreation utilities. And so on. I ask that if any of this money coming out affect any department's hiring process, or is it coming out of the general funds of these departments? You want?
So it's coming out of general fund GL numbers that already had a budget uh for the fiscal year. Uh, no fund balance is gonna be used based on the.
I'm not saying fund balance. I'm paying the budget right now. So we have people that we said we wanted hired.
Oh, no.
If we take the three thousand dollars and we come back and you guys say, well, we couldn't hire them because we used the money to do this. I'm putting it on the record right now to you and Cooper.
Well, which uh?
For ordinance?
Ordinance.
For contractual services, recreation department, any services here that are gonna affect any hiring process.
Services are hiring people.
That's contractual services. That's only for the lease vehicles.
I know, but the budget falls down. What they do is they say in the end of the day, it falls into the available budget.
I don't think they will. Go ahead.
I'm not getting.
He's basically saying if we do this amendment, is it gonna affect any hiring, any department?
No, I purposely did not touch any salary line item. There's a couple of part time line items, which part time is not any position within the city. That's just uh general labor that you hire as needed.
Yeah. So why, so why for all the question all of a sudden? Um, I'm, I'm looking here and these are food for thought questions. You want to answer them?
I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Uh, the mayor's office, you got, they fall for this travel and education for the past two years on here. All of a sudden now it's down to five hundred ba.
No, it's only taking five hundred away. You still have three thousand.
And then the mayor's part time office, you're amending fifteen hundred, right?
Yeah, what I tried doing is, I don't know if you were, were you here during that study sessions? Um, as Councilman Ahmad stated, I kind of took chunks out of certain departments. And he wanted me to do a more smoothed out, a little bit from here, a little bit from here type deal. That way our department doesn't feel like they got singled out because they have a little bit more funds in terms of allocation. Um, so what I did was I pretty much did a thousand here, two thousand here, one thousand here. There's only a few accounts that are larger, but that's because they had a larger budget to begin with, and most of them are general government.
Thank you, Matty. You did a great job.
I counsel, uh, counsel pro time.
Go ahead.
To our clerk, not taking this money out of election part time and material supply, would it affect your elections?
Absolutely.
I think we'll be okay on the.
One eighty five. You're still gonna, she still has one eighty five in the budget for.
Do you want me to?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm just making sure that you're aware.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
The five thousand, I think will be good right now, Councilman. However, if we do have any extra elections, there could be a special election. Then that would have probably affect us. And then I would have to come back to you and ask you that. Okay? And the same thing really with election and supply, the materials and supplies. If, I think we, we go to be okay with August in November. Towards the end of the next fiscal year, we will start preparing for the next August election, which will be gubernatorial. So we're gonna have to play that back.
Thank you.
But I think we'll be okay right now.
So.
Thank you for asking.
So a couple more questions about a few more items. One is workers' comp. I mean, the liability to city employees enormous. Why are we taking sixteen thousand dollars out of it?
Uh, so the workers' comp uh generally uh ranges from three hundred fifty to four hundred thousand dollars. We had a, we increased it to five hundred thousand dollars because this year we had a couple very bad injuries on job sites. But overall, I don't believe that um the historical trend ranges from three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, then my next thing was the general government owned properties. Why are we always heading that account? So when, and, and, and I wanna, and I wanna put this, and I'm not trying to shame anybody.
Yeah.
We keep taking money out of this account for city owned properties, but those crap properties look like crap.
Yeah.
So we're taking money, using them other things, but letting these properties deteriorate, letting weeds grow, busted fences, trash, uh, couches inside driveways on these city properties that are not maintained, but we're gonna always the, we're always the fund this account on multiple different items that we're trying to do in the city.
So that's the own property account is actually put a purpose in purchases of city owned power, like properties. The maintenance is in other GL numbers. Um, and if you have issues with uh like maintenance on certain types of properties, I, it usually comes out of BPW budget.
Um, yeah. It's not like almost department. Pressured yours.
Is this like, is this a yearly expense?
Um, so this right here is to cover the initial conversion. So you have about sixty thousand dollars in uh project management, meaning the implementation, and then sixty thousand.
One time cost.
Yeah, one time sixty thousand dollars, and then the sixty thousand for training. Now that sixty thousand for training is on the high end of training types uh type of cost. We might be lower depending on how well our employees can receive the information and the training that they're gonna be receiving.
I, I, I know, and I want. Council Chair, I wasn't here for the study session, but I know that it was about a hundred seventy thousand dollars yearly, right?
Correct. One seventy, one seventy five, six fifty to be exact.
Can we afford one seventy five every single year, you think? I mean, like, listen, guys, we just fought over four thousand dollars.
The thing is, Councilor, with this one, we have no choice. They're moving from one's uh system to a cloud system that they're gonna stop this one. So the whole city is all linked to this uh BSNA, even the assessor, the clerk. So the city needs it.
Let's just say, let, let, let me, I know I wasn't here. I'm sorry. Yes, forgive me that I was not available.
I'm, I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Say we don't end up doing it. What happens?
Um, I'll say over time, the price is only gonna go up. Their project manager fees, I've already negotiated with them to get their, their training fees down. You know, with it, it's going to be inevitable cost. The longer we wait, the more expensive it will get.
Exactly. I'm sorry. I think the Council Chair question is, if we don't go with BSNA, what's our alternative? That's, that's his question. What can we do?
Some other com, well, again, assessing has to be BSNA. The state only um coordinates with BSNA with it. Um, like I said in the study session, are there other companies that kind of do what BSNA? A lot of individual companies. We would then have to go from one company like BSNA to multiple companies and then work and configure and maintain the communications between them. When I've spoken to other directors uh from other cities, they have a team of people that maintain that connection and maintain the APIs so that all these can communicate. I, I'm one person, you know, you know, with this. Is, is it, is it a large expense? Yes. But I, I want to remind that BSNA is the backbone of everything that we do in this, in this city to maintain the information. It's, it is our cash receiving, is our taxes, is our assessing, it is our building license, animal license, building departments, accounts payable, general ledger. This is the software that every staff member basically uses, I'll say ninety five percent of the time. So, and the, and the, the improvements, you know, uh, uh, again, example, using the study session, the treasurer herself was contacting BSNA wanting to be able to do something. And they said, we can do that, but we can't do it in the dot net. We can only do that in the cloud because dot net is an older language. And, you know, and sort of be able to make the improvements. They stopped years ago making any improvements to the, they're doing the absolute bare minimum for dot net with the expectations of, hey, we're, we're, we're moving to the cloud. You want the improvements that can have with it, the efficiencies that we can develop with this. And keep in mind that this, that this cost, again, it's the, the, the money that's there. It, it is yearly cost. There is a lot of upfront cost that is the high end of what that potential upfront cost. It is a maximum value. Whether we incorporate the travel, the, the potential travel costs that we have to do with BSNA, they're in Bath, Michigan. That's like Lansing area. We'd actually have to pay for them to come down if we wanted to do the training, them onsite. We go virtual training. That would be, help reduce those costs there. With the, we wouldn't look to truly implement this until August of two thousand twenty six. I want to say that too. We are trying to spread this out and do this right with all the departments. Okay, so we can improve the efficiencies, improve our best practices in the city. Cause when we do that, that is going to help the residents with what we do. You know, we have not updated our procedures in at least the three years that I've, that I've been here. And this will be opportunity to be that catalyst to change the inner workings of this city to better help the residents.
Okay, so if I may, Councilman.
Council Chair.
If I may, real quick, I'm sorry, Councilman.
Yep.
I don't like that our comptroller training is going from twelve thousand, five hundred to five hundred.
Can, can I say, they're one of the departments that use BSNA the most. Basically, it's kind of like saying, hey, they're now going to get retrained in their procedures to do their job in BSNA in the cloud version.
I understand that, but I also don't like the fact that we're completely, look, our controllers right now, we've been to twenty five. And, you know, and I'm not trying to make this a back and forth, all right?
No, I'm not.
It's, please.
I'm not.
Feel like every time that we meet, you get up here and speak, it's like, no, but this is why I'm doing it. Comptroller is a very, very important position in the city.
Yeah.
For us to say we're giving them no training in all of twenty twenty five, I, it's, it's not gonna fly with me. I'm okay with figuring this out. But to come back and say that the comptroller has only five hundred dollars in training when they had twelve thousand, five hundred, really is bothering me. So, and so this was something, we need to figure other solutions. And then also kind of going after the fire departments um contractual services.
Mm-hmm.
Even if it's a dollar, I'm not ready to touch anything from the fire department.
I mean, we can, again, go back, but for the comptroller, the twelve thousand was actually um for the anticipating uh education that the previous comptroller was gonna be taking, but she's no longer with us. I, I, or my.
Training, not, not paying for college.
Well, that's, that's what was budgeted for. That training line item is for education and training.
That actually makes me feel better.
Okay, so I, that's why I was like, hey, because it was used for that, let's put it into something that the city can benefit from instead of myself. Cause I, I'm, I'm the proponent for, hey, I understand the city's in a, a financial situation that they can't afford uh certain educational expenses, so I'm not gonna take educational classes right now. I've, I've learned on a job and I understand that the, the experiences on the job are just as valuable as uh classroom education. So I did not want to leave that in there and instead put it towards something for the betterment of the city.
Um, it, it, I'm okay with it, but I think we need to figure out.
I mean, look, the, the one.
I don't, I don't like touching anything for the fire or police and the fact that we're digging in twenty five hundred to the, to the fire department. It just.
I can remove the fire department. It will still be within budget for the training. So I can remove that completely if we want to remove.
Yeah, I, I don't want us, I don't want, and then, how are you? Okay.
Council Chair. Did you check with the fire chief if that's fine?
He said, yep.
He said it's fine.
We, 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 we shared this budget with all the directors beforehand, trying to make sure that everyone was, was okay. I can see that he actually is connected right now. You know, just to get it, to get it from him.
Yeah, you can amend it if you want, Madam Clerk. Council Chair, we, they had a different amendment last time and I asked them to go ahead and change it because they had something from the court. And I.
And the police.
And the police. I was like, you know what, make, work on something else, double check with all the directors. But this is something that we have no, we have a choice, but it's gonna be more expensive choice. Because we still need the BSNA anyway for the assessor's office. If we go for a different route and change the whole city with a different software, oh, it's gonna cost us way more money.
Yeah.
So it's like something like we need to do, so.
Can we remove the, can we, can we not mess with the fire department?
I can remove it. That will, will still be within budget if you remove that just that.
Let's, let's leave dirt. I'm not comfortable touching.
No, I, I. I understand.
Again, I want to, I want to stress, this is the high level of expense. It's not to exceed that level. We, we do our training properly. We, we take again, that thirteen months to truly work and implement this as a city. That, that training potentially, again, they don't travel here. Their travel expenses is fifty thousand dollars.
Are you gonna sell director? I know you mentioned last time, are you gonna still implement uh training for the directors of the department, then the, those direct, the director department will train the employees or?
I believe, I believe a good mixture will, will be our best bet. You know, again, in each department, determine what is gonna best suit them about train the trainer kind of model, training all, all the people, you know, individually. That is something that thirteen months, we will get to go through and, and discuss and determine what's gonna be our best direction. I, I believe mixing the, everyone learns differently. Mixing that is.
I still remember the training was around sixty or?
Uh, it's pretty much rate, rate and half they're estimated was, the BSNA annual will be one seventy five and then their training, the implementation, everything was another one seventy five, broken up over two payments. You know, try to spread that cost over actually the fiscal years. I, I know this is a lot of money, but I, I, I really want to stress that going this route and truly gonna update the process that we do is only gonna help the residents, you know, with this. If I, if I, or anybody, we can save our departments and our workers and give them more, uh, five minutes a day. That adds up so they can better help and serve the residents. We then can actually use this where more departments. Where more departments can use it across the board and the workflow, so we don't have any mistakes. We actually get to create the automation that, to be frank. Should already be there, but just aren't for however many reasons there might be. This is a process that we can go through and. And and set this up as a catalyst.
Yes.
Awesome.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Um couple things, uh I'm confused why these two are on same motion. BSNA and then the budget amendments. And our our current contract with BSNA, how long is that? How long is that?
It it's it's basically, it's annual BS, BSNA is a service that every year.
What dates?
What's that?
What's the date? Is it coming up this month, next month? Then we just do one?
BSNA got, it depends on the module. So right now, the dot net programs, there's, there's like thirteen modules that we pay for, applications. Each one is individually, some have different dates. The big bulk of them was, I believe in May.
I think it wasn't May.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're making a contract with these guys and shouldn't it say, you know, the contract includes any updates?
It does, always.
Three hundred thousand plus for these updates or a new program. I mean, not to, not to pick on your department, but. The IT department, I I don't know, I mean, it's always adding stuff, you know, he comes with this, you know. X amount of dollars and then it's always add more, add more, add more. I mean, we we need it, I think. I'm I'm not a big IT guy, obviously. But um it's all, you know, it's always, okay, we're, hey, guess what? We're gonna get it for this cheap. And then later it's add-on, 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 you know, and I don't, this is, this is something that they should offer us in their original contract. It's like when we do a cement job, you know, a street. And yeah, they bid on the street, we're gonna do street, and then all these add-ons, and we always complain about those. I I just confused why, you know, this isn't something that we see, didn't foresee. Or isn't in the contract that any upgrades like this would be, you know, added into the contract. It's not chump change.
No, it's almost not.
Thousand dollars.
They, this, so this is a a major platform switch for. We have, you know, and unfortunately, we weren't able to attend the study session. Basically, we have a BSNA server here that we have to maintain and control. That houses all the financial information of the city, all the business license, everything. We have to maintain. By going, by going to the cloud, um we're kind of giving the information a little bit more to BSNA themselves. We don't have to maintain that server, you know, anymore. Um and it's no longer built in that dot net, which it uses. Again, we get a little technical, so I apologize. An SQL server that has to communicate with all the different computers are all trying to connect with it. Um, dot net's an old program. This is, you know, programming. This is a complete revamp of the system. In the terms of every time that we we go with BSNA, it does say, cause we we get the updates. Right now in the dot net, they basically do an updates twice a month. We have to manually go in, we have to make sure the updates are applied, whether it's something because, hey, tax is different or something for assess is different. If we don't apply. Could they can show off our, mess up our calculations. Now at the cloud, all that's instant. You basically refresh the window, the web browser. We get the updates right then and there, you know, with it. So the updates are included, all this. This is just such a major, major platform change with it. That it's a, it's a new contract. We were kind of grandfathered in some old ones too. Where now, again, with this upgrade, that's why some of the costs have have increased.
During budget season, why wasn't this discovered or thought of?
We were still in the middle of it and we did, we didn't have, you know, I I understand, I kind of said that in the study session. We are still in the middle of of. See if this is truly a plat, you know, what we really wanted to go for, working with BSNA, trying to get the best cost for us. So we did, we didn't know at that exact time.
What what GL account is that?
So BSNA actually comes out there, if you look at the budget amendment sheet, it actually comes out of that top line item, which is the IT services. One oh one, two five eight, seven two eight. That's what BSNA would come out of. So basically, everything below that would go into that account. So that we could pay for uh BSNA, cause that's what currently pays up, you know, we pay BSNA out of.
So all these deductions on all these other, like the services and uh training and. You.
Yes.
That that, but I added those up and that doesn't come up to that much money though.
Yeah, it does.
Does it?
Exactly.
Comes up to three hundred eighty-five.
No, 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 no. Hundred thirty-four thousand.
Yeah, the difference.
No, no, councilman.
Okay, yeah, I did, it does, it does.
Adds to one thirty-four.
Yeah, I I did that, okay.
And I, my name is honest, because someone's name had to be kind of honest. I really got to honestly say, this is a citywide, every department. Is is BSNA uses this, you know, that, just my name is attached to it, because.
Just whatever city uses, does every city use BSNA or their other companies?
Pretty, pretty much, sir. If you actually go to BSNA online and look at their list, they're not just a Michigan company, they are across the country. Um I I again, I use in the last reference, um more cities are moving to BSNA cloud. Great example is Dearborn, they had their own proprietary software, basically something that they wrote themselves. They tried the the Google thing, didn't work. They're going to BSNA.
How they stopped Google?
For what they wanted to do with this part of it. So Google, they have a whole humongous contract with with Google. But they thought they could do so a little bit more with it. Now it's, now they are going to BSNA cloud right now. I'm not sure if they're a hundred percent live with it.
Director, okay. Um I had discussions past weekend with some family members about the cloud. And no one knows what the cloud is. I mean.
What is the cloud? Is it a a server in some guy's basement somewhere? Is it, you know, in Paris or is it in?
Multi mainframes throughout the country, throughout, you know.
So it's just, it's just, it's just a, a machine in in a room in a building somewhere.
These Mike, these Microsoft, it's actually Microsoft Azure servers that actually it's going on. Those are Microsoft, those are actually usually like. In the bottom of the ocean.
Yeah, it 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 just puts it into a memory somewhere.
It could, it is a computer.
This is a computer you put into.
That's backed up multiple sites, the data is secure, something goes down here, boom, instantly it connects to another one, so we don't lose that data.
So the cloud is, there's thousands of different owned clouds.
Oh, yeah.
There's just one cloud out there and everybody puts information into it. So what they call it, why they, why they call it a cloud and this should be into our memory.
The marketing genius, long time ago.
Cause it's over the internet, councilman, anything you do, it's like you get all the information from their server over the internet.
Why know what it is, but you know, is it, is it some guy's basement? Each cloud's different. It's a cloud, I mean, where's the Facebook cloud? Where's this cloud? I mean, this is a cloud that BSNA owns.
It's a marketing.
They own this cloud, right?
It's a, yeah, it's a marketing.
It's not the cloud, it's just in their, in the computer, in their memory.
Correct. Good questions.
No, I know, yeah, we we debated for a while around a campfire.
Yeah.
I don't know, man, I kind of feel like councilman once was onto something, where is this guy? Who is this cloud guy?
Uh, let's take this for a vote.
Take it for a vote.
All right, any other discussion? All right, Lou said stop, Tom. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, how happy Cooper is looking at his face and cheeks. This, I I again, I I'm gonna keep on saying, this is a major upgrade to the city and our services, it's gonna.
This will make it work a lot more efficiently. Save us a lot of.
Thank you, nine, you all say here. Next up, ninety, human resource director Fisher, DPW supervisors association contract extension.
Counselor Chair.
Yes, sir.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the extension of the agreement between the city and Dearborn Heights DPW Supervisors Association on a day-to-day basis. Until a new agreement is reached and approved as outlined in nine dash D.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Uh just want to give a quick update on this, that I spoke with them, I spoke with our chief of staff. This is just honoring this current contract until they come up with some type of agreement. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye. Those oppose, the ayes have it, motion carries. No, you left them. I would like you to take it out, though.
I mean, if the chief is okay with it, but.
I I don't want anybody touching police and fires money, but Mr. Cooper always gets away with it somehow.
Yeah.
Next up is library director McCaffrey, library budget amendment. Councilwoman Brier.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the following amendments to the library budget. Increase one hundred and seven thousand to revenue line seven three eight, zero zero zero, five four eight grants. It changes from zero to a hundred and seven thousand. Increase a hundred and seven thousand to expense line seven three eight, seven three eight, eight zero eight awarded grant. Which changes from zero to a hundred and seven thousand. Increase one hundred and sixty-three thousand to revenue line seven three eight, zero zero zero, six eight six. State aid slash penal fines, that changes from one hundred thousand to two hundred and sixty-three thousand. And increase one sixty-three thousand to expense line seven three eight, seven three eight, nine eight one, capital outlay. Which changes from two hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty to four hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty. Revenue from these lines will be used to make early literacy kits, acquire foreign language materials, improve and add PC infrastructure grants. And help remodel the bathroom. Additional state aid is outlined in nine E.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Brier, seconded by Councilman Constant. Uh any discussion? I just want to open it up. Once again, recognize our um building director. Always goes above and beyond, very transparent. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, library, library. He always goes above and beyond, he's extremely, extremely tentative to the council and just very transparent. And I, and I absolutely love this guy. I absolutely love him. And so I thank you so much for this director McCaffrey, I mean.
Always on top of his game.
He is the best uh radio voice, I think, in the state. So. But I do, I do want to just appreciate him on that. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those, let's do that again, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, the ayes have it, motion carries. Ever seen our uh IT director so happy? Next up is.
Give you lots of work.
Good.
Good.
Next up is nine F, library director McCaffrey, early literacy grant project.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized the payment for books for reading kits. From Book Depot for costs not to exceed twenty-six thousand. Be paid from account number seven three eight, seven three eight, eight oh two. This will be funded completely through the thirteenth district grant. Which has funds remaining to cover all costs for the project is outlined in nine F.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Constant, seconded by the Honorable Councilwoman Brier. Any other discussion?
Counselor Chair.
Can you just step up to the mic and say that, please?
Seven three eight, eight oh eight. Eight oh eight.
Correct.
Is it after seven and before nine?
Eight oh eight?
Yes. Think it was a typo.
Last three digits.
Correct. Taken from line seven three eight, seven three eight, eight oh eight. Thank you, it was a small typo.
As noted.
Yep.
Is that thirteenth district? Is that thirteen congressional district or is that something else?
Yes, it actually was a thirteenth district grant from a few years ago, actually, and we're in the last phase of spending that money. So, yeah.
Let's do it.
Any other discussion?
Yes, I ran into the director today, uh him and one of his employees, uh delivering uh items. Can you, I mean, what was, what were you delivering today?
Uh we were delivering activity boxes to about four hundred homes, um and over eleven hundred uh items. Um so um yeah, that's what we were doing and uh these um literacy kits are gonna be going to schools. So we can hopefully improve some reading scores, um get those up.
Tell you, man. This guy doesn't just sit in the office.
No, he does not.
He's out beating the streets, I'll tell you.
I'll tell you, council, uh councilman Wensel, one day I was doing a ride along with a police officer and they had an incident. At the library, man, what does he have to go through every day? I'm telling you, it's the busiest daycare, it's the busiest daycare in the county. Well, thanks. I'm telling you.
Doctor McCaffrey, we're really thankful and grateful. All right.
Thanks, sir.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, the ayes have it, motion carries.
Counselor Chair, I have a a a quick question about item um. Uh nine C, we voted on, I think it should be put in the minutes that we are not touching the fire department. Or, cause we just okay, I don't think it was put in the motion.
It wasn't.
Was it?
It was Ezra, I think they're okay, the chief approved it.
The chief approved it.
Okay, we're, okay, we're doing it, Ezra, okay.
Yeah, okay. All right, if Mandy wants to take it out, that would be great. Thank you. Next up is a petition from citizens, none.
And also the Saab, what about you?
Then we have orances and resolution.
That's what I'm saying, I want to.
After, after this order of resolution. Treasurer Hicks Clayton, collection of CSO basin, SRF five four three zero, zero two funds.
Counselor Chair.
Councilwoman Brier.
I'll make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt the collection of CSO basin, SRF five four three zero. That zero two funds resolution resolving the following. Let it be resolved, the administration has not resolved this matter. The city council, by adoption of the resolution. The treasurer will be the point of contact. Furthermore, grant the treasurer the authorization to pursue and collect the funds from Wayne County. Reaching a resolution for the city of Dearborn Heights by resolution on July eighth, twenty twenty-five.
I I would like to say, though.
I'd like to control.
Oh, I was gonna say, I still think the clerk, the mayor, the controller should still also be a point of contact and not only the treasurer, but.
Yeah.
I think the more we have, you could take this on, but I don't think that you should be the only person that they can communicate.
Absolutely.
I would like to end this to allow the controller, the mayor.
There's your controller, mayor.
Was there a second on that motion?
No.
Not yet.
No, not yet, okay. So we're reading on before we second it. Whoever, so can you add that to your?
Right, that's it. Let's make it treasurer, uh controller and mayor.
And clerk.
And clerk, okay.
Can I get a second?
Second.
So, motion made by Councilwoman Brier, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion on this? I think this is fair, I think this is open and I think this is tax money that belongs to the uh the city of Dearborn Heights and I believe. Uh, Madam Treasurer, that you're doing your due diligence and you're going out and you're bringing this money back home to our residents.
And the treasurer is the receivables and of the city.
We can allow the communication to be spread out.
I agree. My point was, and by the way, the resolution does not mistake any facts. We don't have the money yet, so it has not been resolved, okay? That's not, all the other information is accurate in here. You've got the financial reports from Wayne County. I did want to bring forward a sample bond book. This is our twenty-one bond book for the study. When you look inside it, and I can pass it around, as long as you promise to give it back to me, but all the signatures in it, madam clerks is in there? Yes, because you do have the resolutions in that with the council, uh the mayor and the treasurer. The only time in five years the comptroller's office was included was through, and God rest his soul, Badri Jawad, because we CC'd him. I'm just being honest with you.
Thank you, we have a motion here on the table.
Thank you.
Motion made by Councilwoman, Councilwoman Brier, seconded by Councilman Saab. And to allow the mayor, the controller and the clerk to also take part in this, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, Councilman Saab.
Council, uh Council Chair, I'd like to suspend the rules and rescind the.
Hold on, you just gotta put a motion to suspend the rules.
Can I get a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion made by Councilman Saab to suspend the rules, can I get a second? Seconded by Councilman Wensel, hang on, suspend, Councilman Saab. Seconded by Councilman Wensel. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, the ayes have it. Next up is going to be.
Eleven B.
Um, what can we make this on it? Can we make it under eleven B?
Um.
B, eleven B?
It's not a resolution. It's not a resolution, so.
No, so then we'll.
I would say under city officials, but we'll just take.
We'll just go to, we'll go to nine?
Yes. Whatever the next.
Nine G?
G. I'm sorry.
Nine G. I don't want to have a brain fart. Nine G? You're having a senior. Okay, now would you like to make a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to rescind motion number. Uh twenty-five dash three twenty-six for the location.
What is that number again?
Two five dash three two six, that is the location of the Beach Daily New Fire Station. And I just wanna, this is, and I want to be clear on one thing with this motion. I'm not removing my vote, because I think the location is a bad location. I'm removing my vote is because we put a condition to the vote. I stood to the residents and said I will be part of the process from A to Z. And this administration walked out of this meeting with their eyes closed and ears shut. And just forgot about anything and they want to control what happened. So unfortunately, for our amazing fire department. Which they know we want to, if I, and I say this again, if we can build on the Taj Mahal, I would. And the fire department is gonna get what they want, not what this administration wants, what they want. They're the ones gonna be living there and operating out of it, and not based on people they know. We want professionals out there in the bus companies to do it. And if it's gonna hold back a few months, let it be. But we're not gonna learn back from past mistakes and the disasters the city's currently following, just like the park project and every other project going on in the city. So, this again.
You're you're you're. You, you, you're hearing a discussion.
But this is my motion. I'm pointing it on the record.
It's not, it's not a discussion.
Well, my motion is to rescind the vote, my vote, on the fire station.
I have, I have, I have motion made by Councilman Saab. I need a, I need a second.
A second.
Seconded by Councilman Wensel to rescind twenty-five, three, two, six of the placement of the fire station. Now, any discussion? You said your part.
This, this is a classic example of non-transparency. This fire station. We, no one, it's been over a year. And no one's had any idea, not even a artist rendering on a napkin of what this building is. City of Livonia is putting something forward right now where they want to spend a bunch of money. We do. They have drawings and everything of what their fire, they're redoing their fire station. What the fire station looks like, you know, that one guy had a little model of it. I mean, we, we have no idea. Is it two-story, one-story? You know, flat roof, pitched roof, you know, metal roof, you know, I mean, we have no idea.
This is, this was the starting process to do it, but apparently. I'm receiving emails from the administration and the city attorney saying that we would not be a part of it. And that's gonna be aligned for the condition I made during my meeting that I wanted to be from part A to B. And this had nothing to do with me ever. What they're claiming negotiating. I want to sit in these meetings and just sit and take notes. I want to be in every single meeting for transparency. Because if Sue called me or Vince called me or Jack called me or Bob called me, I'd say one, two, three.
Yep.
Because you can never get away nothing with this administration. They don't want that. There's a reason why they don't. Whatever they're hiding, whatever deals is being made, they don't want us a part of it. There's, that's the end of the story. And then, Council Chair to. To add to my motion, if you can send it, I want to restrict all these funds from being used towards anything. Until it's bought back in front of council for approvals. No, 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 I understand any types of fund. Towards the new fire department.
Okay, well, right now the first motion is to rescind.
Yes.
Well, we have to, we have to do that. Roger, did you want to say something?
Yes, Council Chair. Uh, I think what I've heard is that it's a. And only reason I'm jumping in now, I said in the beginning, he's mentioned the city attorney. I, I've explained that it's not about Councilman Saab. I trust the professional, the fire chief that was in the meeting. I didn't have, I was, didn't have a chance to go to the last, the meeting that they had. But I trusted city engineer dib, I trust fire chief Brogan. And what they're doing, what they're capable of doing. They had one more um gentleman from the fire department. Um, of course, the legal department will look over the contracts. I don't think as a necessity that you need Councilman Saab in every meeting taking notes. And whatever's gonna be distributed because there's confidentiality in every agreement. Now, as to the accusations. That are being thrown out, I think they're frivolous, they're malicious. And they're speaking of a sense of paranoia that this administration, nobody can be trusted. Our fire chief can't be trusted, our city engineer cannot be trusted, our fire people, the professionals can't be trusted. Only Mr. Saab can be trusted. Well, that speaks of. I'm not gonna say incompetence, but it speaks of lack of understanding of leadership and trusting your people. Now. Do what you have to do. I think that how um the message that I gave to him is you're gonna be voting on that later on. Uh, when the contract comes, at that point, you can revoke or stop the contract. But the process and the people involved are above reproach. There's no indication of anything. Uh, in, in, indicating anything fraudulent or criminal in any of our, our professionals that are hired. And I'm sick and tired of these attacks on the administration and lack of trust. That's why we're in a position we are in with a lot of litigation. Now, if we understand what we, we hire people do, let them speak and do what they're supposed to do. That's what we're supposed to do. Trust the people we hire and work with them. Now, if you want to rescind it, you do what you have to do. It's against my advice. I think you passed a good vote. You made a decision. It's a great location. I trust fire chief Brogan. I trust our firefighters. I trust our police officers. I trust our leadership. And I'm saying that how, do not speculate and accuse people of things that's not true, sir. You do not have to be part of it, but you will have to say, as the charter nine point five dictates. The charter says that how the, the mayor brings provisions and the contracts to the city council. Just like what we had with, with Crestwood last week. I said, you cannot denote, negotiate it. And then turn around and vote on it. It's a conflict of interest.
Thank you, Roger. You all done here?
Yeah.
I just want to say something.
Yeah.
Um, and that's okay, because I think like you. I think everybody here trusts our fire chief, trusts the work, and this was passed. All Councilman Saab was, trust him like you trust everybody else. But it seems like the issue was. That you guys didn't trust Councilman Saab to be in the rooms on whatever you, decisions you guys were making. And it's not that Councilman Saab wanted to make the decision, but at least he can say, I was just in this meeting. You know, you know, Madam Treasurer, Madam Clerk, Councilman Wanso, Councilman Bedu, and Sue Kaminsky, Lou, Rooster Pepe, guys. This is what was set. For some odd reason, you guys are so scared of the, of the notion of saying, we don't want, we don't want anybody to know what's happening. You guys can just look at the contract after. No. All, all, all this was, was talking about like, you know, an open door policy, transparency. That, that's all this was and, and we. This was the bridge that brings the administration and the council together. And I really believe you guys dropped the ball here, man. You know, regardless, I voted no. Councilman Saab did his research and he said, you know what? We're gonna move forward on this. Let's, let's talk about this. And I don't know why Mr. Deeb and you and everybody, I don't believe the chief, fire chief. I think the fire chief would have been okay with Councilman Saab being there. I mean, I think Councilwoman, Councilwoman Breyer could have went, Councilwoman Miloski Maxwell could have went, I think Councilman uh Tom Wanso could have went. I think anybody, I think residents should be able to go. What do we got to hide? Hey, guys, this is what we're working on. This is what we have going on. But if once we start becoming secretive. That's when things start becoming alarming and questioning and be honest with you, I think this is a great motion.
Council Chair, my, my question is, you know, why not? You know, why not? That's, what's the reason? What do you, why, what's one reason why you don't want someone sitting in? I, I, I think that not only Councilman Saab, but every council member should be allowed to, to, to attend these.
Councilman Wensel, this is not, this is actually would be taking time out of my day, out of my full-time job. To do this, but also, you know, the city attorney made a valid point. Where, where you should trust the administration, but I also, the residents have put their trust in me.
Yep.
In me, and I gave them, when I set up, put my vote, I want to be, the condition would be, be from A to Z. I'm also holding my ethical duty to the residents. And the fact that you come out saying that, oh, this has to do with negotiations and this has to, confidential, there's nothing confidential. This is public. This is public money. What's confidential about it? If a resident called me and asked me what's going on at the fire station, I don't know. The administration, you never respond. You guys are always insulting us in our emails, like you're threatening and daring us. Well, you know, all I can say is I had a talk with our fire chief. I had a talk with our fire department. I think they completely understand and honestly, we have the best fire chief in, in, I think in the country. Most honorable, most, most understanding person there is. And our fire department understands and we see what they're going through right now. And we're not gonna build on what the administration wants and what they're gonna put forward. We're gonna build on what the fire department wants. And what they desire and what they design and what their needs are.
I just, I just, I just want to read something right here from the Michigan City Council generally proposed. This is what Dana Parrish sent us last week. And it says, key aspects of city council's oversight in the state of Michigan. This is not Dearborn Heights. This is the entire state. That means every city has a city council member that has these oversight uh, uh, badges or laws. That says legislative authority. City council holds the legislative power which inherently includes the right. To oversee administration of municipal affairs and enforce city policies. That means right now, if a policy comes to put together and says, approved and then is, you know, by this body that says. We want Councilman Saab to be in there, that's the, that's the state of Michigan telling you, Roger, that you can do that.
Oh, no, sir. Don't, don't say that. That's what that's. That says oversight as you do when you do a budget. That doesn't say you sit in meetings and do the job of what the administration. So you don't need a mayor, you don't need directors. You're gonna do the jobs yourselves. That's incompetent and ineffective and shows lack of leadership, sir. If anyone wants to step forward and lead it, do it properly. Learn how a business runs, learn how administrations run. We delegate. I know. We trust the people we delegate to. You don't step in and run it. And MMRMA told you when we went, right before you started this job as city council. On this position, you don't micromanage. You let the people do their job and there's lanes for everybody.
We have a motion on the table here, guys, to, to, to rescind our vote. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. There you go. No more fire station, no more oversight, no more nothing. I know Councilman wanted to also add something. Restrictive.
H, nine H?
Yeah, well, how, how about, how about, thank you. If, if I make a motion just to let, because it's city property. Just to let myself and a, a committee of volunteers. To cer, walk the site so we don't get kicked off. We're out there walking around, take measurements, things of that nature, just to get the.
How about, how about we, we allow city council to assess the property, not just how much?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. How does that sound? How about you get, cause then, then once we start saying only Tom Wanso, imagine Councilman. To be honest with you, I don't think I'm gonna go assess the property. I put my trust in you, but if Councilman Ahmad wants to, or Councilman Council wants, we can't.
I don't want him.
So whoever he choose, or council and whoever he chooses.
Yeah, I mean, if Council wants to take somebody with them, you're more than right.
Yeah, just to, just to get the ball wrong, cause the people, the volunteers that want to get this, they're interested in going there, taking measurements, looking at what kind of dirt's there.
A motion for nine H to allow city council members to assess the property at the corner of.
Van Born and Academy.
Van Born and Academy.
City-owned property.
At the city-owned property. Uh, any chance we can get the exact?
I can get the, I, I've, I've got, the director gave me, he text, he, he uh, sent me a thing and it's got the property identification number on it.
Can you read it?
I don't have it with me right now. I can send it to Lynn. I can get it to her.
Whatever the address is of uh Total Automotive, it's.
Well, it's uh, it's the old party apartments.
Yeah, whatever, whatever the address is, it's.
Yeah.
Look, look, I think that's.
Between Academy.
Not approving anything. Not saying no farmer's gonna go there. She's just allowing the city council to assess.
Yeah, okay.
Right. Can I get a second?
Second.
Sorry, Councilman, I think I may have stuck with your uh motion, but I only wanted to.
Fine, well, it's fine. Let's get going.
Who's the second?
Second is Councilman Wanso.
Oh, you got, you motioned?
I guess.
Okay.
And you're a surveying.
Okay.
Alright, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
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 Uh, let's do that better. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Alright, next up we have.
Gotta get out of the, back to the meetings.
No, we don't. Or so you don't have to get out of a closed session when, I mean.
Are suspended.
Suspended.
You don't have to get out of it anymore. There's nothing else but comments from council members.
Yes.
Go ahead.
We got a few comments I wanna, wanna put up and I want to start off first with back to the fire department issue. Again, this is not an insult to anybody in the city. This is not an insult to any residents and to our great fire department. This is what you call transparency and this is what you call holding them accountable. It's been going on for two years. The second we gave them the opportunity to go to move forward, they took advantage of it. And this is, this is what this is doing right now is holding, holding the administration accountable. A couple of things, uh, the park back here behind us, Van Horn Park behind us, it's an absolutely. Run, not just hazardous. It's, it's unbelievable. There was supposed to be a scheduled meeting with DTE when the city engineer was up here. Uh, at the last uh council meeting we had, he said Wednesday, the following Wednesday we're gonna have a meeting. I emailed them, they never responded back. But I was out there, the, the, the day of the meeting, the council meeting we had, the last council meeting, the next day, Wednesday, I was actually. Back out there with a bunch of directors that were there. What the city failed to tell uh residents is, we came asking for eighty-five thousand dollars for repairs because the bathrooms are clogged. When I was out there, DPW was out there, water department was out there, rec uh director was out there. Bunch of people from DPW were out there. What they didn't notify us is when they ran a new basin line across the bathrooms. They ripped out the pipe, the sewage um. And the electrical works placed right through it and just covered it right back up. But the city engineer comes here, says that we gotta pay for it. They gotta figure out the problem. Might be a tennis ball. That wasn't disclosed. Second thing, the basins and the parking lot, we walked the park with the building director. He started taping everything off with caution tape. You got equipment that, with the wrong nuts and bolts. You got rails that were just loose. Uh, the turf, we're picking staples off the ground. Uh, the carpet that, you know, the carpet was supposed to have padding. You're supposed to have a hard surface under it with up to six inches. Of rubber. They had regular sand that was washing in into the basins. The basins were literally full to the top. And they say that this was gonna cost about eighty-five thousand dollars to fix. When we looked at the equipment pictures we took and I sent an email, I honestly tell you, it's between six to seven hundred thousand dollars worth of repairs. So I'm doing a ride along with a police officer that Friday. We pull up into the park there, we find a company doing the work. And I ask him, how are you having a talk with him? I'm like, no, what kind of job is this? Is this acceptable? You know, you know what? He responds to me and tells me the company Premier. Yeah, we hired a contractor that did a pretty shitty job. This is the contractor the city hired. He's like, I don't know what to tell you, but uh, this is the work we got and we're trying to fix it. Spoke to DTE. And TTE, I was advised that they can't talk to us. They can only talk to the mayor's office and the chief of staff. Where they went. But that park should be closed. It's not safe. The work, the level of quality that's at that park is ashamed. I swear to God, there's um. Just. The residents should go take a walk on there, two million dollars into that project. And by the way, the, the splash pad.
Yeah.
They're saying it was damaged and it's three hundred fifty thousand dollars repaired. They also ripped the wires out when they were digging and never fixed anything. And I got a pool guy to come look at it and they said it would cost nowhere near that to fix the plumbing and the concrete there. So just when we say that we want transparency, we want good contractors coming out. I, I'm not trying to do it. Council Chair is not trying to do it. The city deserves better. Our residents for their kids and the money they're paying deserve better.
I know nothing about contracting work.
Right, I'm just saying. We're looking at the, the mulch. They put mulch right next to base. Every time it rains, they're filling up. Like, it makes no sense. The, the caps on these basins are sewers, I'd wanna call them. They're about seven, eight pounds. Any child can lift them up in a park and go fall right in there, seven, eight feet deep. These are supposed to be tamper-proof cover. Like, I don't understand how the city's engineers, uh, there was twelve of them out there, allowed this kind of work. I mean, I was out, out there at the city inspectors and they were just pointing things out left and right, but how is it open? My second thing is, I emailed Roger. Uh, last week, asking him, I had a resident reach out to me and I sent him the message the resident sent me. They were concerned that the mayor had bought a house in another city. Is he still living in the city of Dearborn Heights? Because what the charter says is to be an elected official, you have to live in the city. He said, I will look into it. So I'm guessing he has not seen the mayor and the mayor is nowhere to be around, cause he hasn't responded back.
Council Chair, I, I'm any accusations against.
For you that email.
Point of order, guys, let.
I don't care if you said, we look at, he's still here in the city.
Roger, please. Okay, thank you.
Uh, for you that email. Uh, third, uh, third thing is, over the Fourth of July weekend. My God. I have pets. My pets were going crazy. But put the pets aside. I put them downstairs in our theater. It was a soundproof, great.
Well, yes.
I woke up the next day. It took me two and a half hours to clean out my pool. How, how dirty it was. Like, I understand that when the people have the right to celebrate, but we also have the right to enforce our laws. And our city ordinances, which the police department, and I'm not pointing this on any of our officers, because I called one night. The police were out there at Conlock, had some kids pulled over in the parking lot. We gotta do better. Dearborn issued like four hundred tickets. They made money off of these citations. How much did we do? What did the city do? Because they were doing fireworks till one thirty in the morning.
Mm-hmm.
And I understand we're short-staffed, but this is where we say the city misses out on opportunity, but also to protect the residents and safety of the residents. I gotta always complain about uh speeders. Please tell your kids, slow down. These accidents are getting worse by the day. I swear. It's, it's so bad what we're seeing. And while we're being told the kind of accidents are happening, please tell your kids, if you get them a fast car, know you're giving your kid a weapon. Please tell them to slow down in residential neighborhoods, please. And please, if you got long grass or weeds, please maintain your homes. I mean, we have residents come and saying how bad our city looks that live in our own city. It all starts with every resident and their property. Maintain your property. It takes one hour of the week just to do some work, long work outside, please. Thank you.
Okay, wow, okay. Next, uh, council member.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
Thank you, Council Chair. Uh, whatever Councilman Saab said. Uh, actually, our police department, they're doing a great job. Uh, and I have, you know, good news from the police department. They started something called the Citizen Academy to whoever is interested. They're gonna have a three-day Citizen Academy to see exactly what they go through, what they do, like it's called Behind the Badge Academy. So any, anybody from Dearborn Heights can uh fill out an application and uh join those three days. Uh, where they're gonna offer sessions to attend at no cost. Uh, for adults in Dearborn Heights who have interest in experiencing law enforcement. A three-day program designed to provide insight to a daily responsibility of police officers. Um, it's uh, July twenty-eighth, uh, the thirtieth and thirty-first. The time is from six to eight thirty PM at the Ju, Justice Center. Uh, you can go over impaired driving awareness, K nine demonstration. investigative skills, vehicle and building searches, criminal investigations and crime scene techniques. Um, whoever is interested, please contact Officer Hjaj at three one three, three one zero six eight six eight. You can text them too. Again, three one three, three one zero six eight six eight. I think it's a, it's a great academy to be in, just to see exactly what they go through and you'll have a better, you know, understanding of, uh, the work our great officers, uh, do every single day. Uh, thank you, thank you, Councilor.
Any, any other council member? Go ahead, Councilman, uh, actually, I'll go, because I know you like to go last.
Fine, okay.
Go ahead, Councilman, Council, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, the fireworks were bad this year. What I said maybe didn't come out clearly. Don't let them off in our residential neighborhood, neighborhoods. There was somebody in the neighborhood I'm in, uh, injured real bad from shooting off the, uh, uh, commercial grade fireworks. Uh, I wanna also echo what Councilman Sop said, please slow down, uh, in our, our residential neighborhoods. Um, boy, do I see some fancy cars, the North End BMWs and let parents know and everyone know, you're, you're, a lot of responsibility comes with that car. And as Councilman Sop said, you, you, you don't wanna be giving your, your son or daughter a weapon to run over a child and end up getting sued. Uh, good job to, with our I T department with finding the money for the upgrade for our, um, BASF software. And, uh, I really hope we can come to some quick resolution because we had agreed on a site and, uh, we gotta get this fire station built. It's a big contract. We're entitled to, uh, some oversight, so let's, let's see if we can come to a resolution regarding this matter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I quickly just wanna say, hey, I hope everybody had a good and, and a joyful Fourth of July. Um, to see that we didn't do our best at stopping the amount of hazardous fireworks, illegal fireworks, I say. It's disappointing. Like, I, I, I watched the, the neighboring city come out and say, if you do this, if you shoot them out in the street, we're gonna ticket you. Um, if you do this, we're gonna come and we're gonna issue a ticket with a, with a large fine. Five hundred, uh, 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 tickets, or four hundred tickets were given out. I think it was like two hundred fifty arrests were made. You know, regardless of what the numbers are, but the truth is, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't tell our residents that if you wanna do fireworks, go do it in your backyard, you can't do it on the public street. Then we just thought it's became a free for all, and I hope next year we can, you know, we can find ways to tell our residents, if you wanna enjoy fireworks, go do it in your backyard. You know, I have an animal, I got a dog, so if he was held and, you know, we, we had to, it was just ugly. I won't go too far into that, but I also wanna talk about another couple of issues that I'm so bothered by. There's a, there's a lie going around that city council didn't approve ten thousand or ten million dollar, uh, 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 grant. That the city council didn't approve a ten million dollar grant, right? It's all out there. I don't, I don't know. But there's a rumor out there that this city council did not approve a ten million dollar grant. Adam Clerk, I'd love for you to research that, because I don't remember, but I do remember that there was a grant, that I did vote no one. I believe Councilman Montzough voted no one, but it still passed. And the vote, my no vote was because it was gonna increase water bills. I didn't wanna vote yes, but nothing is coming for the city council at ten million dollars that, that it was a grant that was coming in. We said, nope, we don't wanna accept the money. That's a lie. So these lies that are being spread out there is just so ugly. Another thing, I'm having many, many conversations with residents and people are just fed up with the blight. They're just fed up with it. What are we doing? Why are we still giving twenty-four, twenty-five day waiting, then the summer's over? Like, anybody you're right right now in July, come August, it's gonna, the, 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 end of August, you're gonna see the trees start falling down. Three September or changing colors, like, it is crazy. Um, so I really believe that we as, as this body here need to do better and, and put, you know, better policies forward. And we need to start holding people accountable. It's not nice. Um, and then, you know, just to talk a little bit about our DPW crew, I know that they're going out there day in, day out. Do some of the work with the street sweepers, uh, but they're not gonna be able to clean every single catch basin and every single street. That's a hundred and eighty square miles. It's impossible. So to the residents at home, I know these roads seem like they're not safe, but we need to clean those catch basins because that's gonna prevent flooding. It's not gonna prevent it one hundred percent, but it's definitely gonna make things easier. I passed by some of these neighborhoods and then I blame a lot of it on the sycamore trees. I'm going through the neighborhoods and I'm seeing so many of these catch basins, they're just covered with, with pounds of dirt and leaves, like, what are we doing? And I don't blame the residents. Putting it on us too, but I'm asking that our residents do a little better. Please upkeep your homes. Clean the catch basins, clean your homes, tell your children to slow down. Hopefully by next year, we can figure out something about these dangerous fires. Thank you. Councilman Montzough.
Thank you, Councilor. Um, first of all, I wanna say that I'm gonna stay on this eviction, uh, resolution. And as Councilman Baydun just said, we need to get together as a council and work on this, uh, the time it takes for the court to, uh, to write tickets and assess fines, takes too long. It should be something, you get your first warrant, you get your first warrant, you get, get a ticket or whatever. Second time, you don't get a warrant. You just get the ticket, the city comes and cleans it up and you get put on your taxes. It's too much time. Some of these things go on for months and months in the court system. Not blaming the courts, it's just the way it is. So maybe as a body here, we can work on something and advise the courts or work with the courts to come up with a solution where these things are just ma- you know, instant, you, you know, you don't have this time to, I mean, multiple, multiple offenders, that's a big issue. They're, they're just like, they, they clean it up and they're, they're back again doing it. I talked to the ordinance officers. I went to a clean or court order cleanup the other day with some court officers, with some, uh, the ordinance people. And they said, well, this is the third time they've been here. They're doing this, they keep on coming back and back. I mean, it's ridiculous. We gotta do something about that. And, um, uh, thank you, Councilor Chair, for the last meeting, uh, reading a little statement about, uh, the situation I was involved in. I I, uh, I, I suffered a severe head trauma about six weeks ago and whiplash. And I'm just recovering now, I'm, I'm probably seventy-five percent recovered. Still have some issues, but, uh, I wanna thank everyone for bearing with me and not, you know, I know a lot of people knew about it and people were respecting my privacy and not getting into it, but thank you so much. I'm back.
Uh, Congresswoman?
Um, yeah. I just wanna say to the residents, um, we need to be aware of what's going on in your neighborhood. Three thirty-eight A M this morning, a car was stolen from in front of my house by two individuals. Looking at my cameras, I saw a few cars pass this pair as they were walking up and down the streets and no one should be walking up and down the street in the middle of the night, especially three thirty-eight in the morning. So, you know, if we're more aware of it, maybe we call and alert the police and have them check on it, because what's open at three thirty-eight in the morning? And they were just pacing the street, so. They were in the middle of the street and they were walking fast, they were dressed in hoodies, pulled over there, you know.
I'm sleeping at four in the morning.
Miss heat, you're not wearing a hoodie, okay?
Oh, yeah.
But it was just shocking. And that's not the first time. This happened about three years ago, and it was a kitty corner. House across the street from me, they had a car stolen, and I watched the same thing happen. It was a pair of individuals that went up to the car, got in and took it.
I think we have a curfew. I'm not sure. I know City Detroit, I was watching the news yesterday, and they're coming up with their curfew, no one sixteen or under out after ten A M or ten P M, seventeen, uh. It's a state. I think we have a.
State twice.
No, no. It's not state, it's each city. I was watching the, that's the news, the City of Detroit, they're, do we have a curfew?
Yeah, we do.
We should, we should look into that, because I know, I, I live on the corner and, and on a kind of a busy street, and there's kids walking all night long, and you know, every time I see them, I gotta stop and wait till they walk away, you know, blocks away, so I can go back and look in the house or something. And my dog barks constantly all night, kids walking by.
You know, it falls so crazy, I was today, the other day, and mini bucks.
Oh, gosh, oh.
No, 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 guys, this, this, you're, you're, on Lehigh Street, there was a guy on a John Deere tractor.
Oh, yeah.
And I swear, I mean, went seventy miles per hour. It was so bad, I said, what?
Oh, yeah, yeah, he's, uh.
Oh.
I said, there's no, you know, I was with my buddy Adam, and he's like, what is that?
That's an adult. That's an older guy that does that. I, I've called on him before, yeah. I mean, it's.
I've seen him.
Yeah, he's got like a motor on it.
A blue dirt bike too?
Oh, yeah, blue dirt bike and go-kart, uh.
I don't believe what I was watching. This, we really need to get ourselves together.
And they don't stop for the stop signs either.
Outside, did it?
They blow right through them, it scares me.
All right, uh, next up, here at Councilman. Same number, we're gonna take it over to an option.
Councilor, okay. We do have our Ekor's Creek meeting on Wednesday. Oh, we took the glasses off, okay. Uh, the twenty-third at six P M, three, 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 five, South Beach Daily. Okay, I got it. And, and now the announcement for this Thursday, the twenty-eighth for the South Urban Heights Civic Association, we will have our treasurer and our assessor speaking. We have to confirm a new location, so I'll advise you at the next council meeting, because, uh, apparently the school board needs their meeting to go longer that night, so we'll, we'll probably be at the police department, the justice center, but I will confirm that at our next meeting. That's seven o'clock for that.
And let us know.
It will do that.
Ekor's Creek meeting for twenty-third.
Yeah.
For the meeting.
Yeah.
Any other council from administration?
Curfew is from ten P M to six A M, Sunday through Thursday, and eleven P M to six A M, Friday and Saturday.
We need to start calling, see them walking streets.
Uh, uh, anyone on age seventeen and under is ten eight, ten P M to six A M, Sunday through Thursday, and eleven P M to six A M on Friday and Saturday. The city of Dearborn Heights, by city ordinance.
Yeah, I knew we had one. I got yelled at.
It's in our city code.
Yeah.
Go ahead, sir. Leave, leave, leave me. My wife has to be home by noon.
Um, I'm talking as a comptroller right now. Um, I wanna piggyback on something that you, uh, talked about, Councilor Chair. Um, I don't take any sides. I'm a neutral party. Uh, I'm an honest person. My issue with this city at this time in the past year or so is that there's a lot of misinformation spread from all different parties. Administration, council, residents and all that. My only issue is, is that when misinformation is presented by a city administrator, a city official or an elected official, that sways public opinion and the public is misinformed. Um, regarding item eleven A today, I specifically told you that in May sixth, an email was sent out to Council Chair, Council Board Time, as well as the treasurer, stating that the Wayne County came back and explained exactly the bond language that said that the C S O over capture cannot be paid out, paid back until the bond has been completely paid, which would have ended in December twenty twenty-seven. This idea that the administration failed or did not complete their tasks was unwarranted. And the reason being is that now the public thinks that the administration is just letting money sit out there and not taking care of business, so to speak. Um, that money is coming back and honestly, this resolution means absolutely nothing in a sense that whatever anybody comes onto board, any communication comes onto board within this, uh, matter, it's gonna be the same outcome. The bond language states that the over capture cannot be paid back until December twenty twenty-seven. So to come up here and say, hey, no, the administration hasn't been doing anything, but then I have email record between Wayne County, as well as within, between council members, that the resolution is, hey, we understand we over captured, but the legal language of the bond states that we cannot give you the money back until December twenty twenty-seven. Yes.
Any of those twenty twenty-seven, Chris? The man in treasure wants to spend her time trying to get that information. Why is that odd?
It doesn't bother me, but the statement made that the administration has not resolved this matter is false. So. But I'm just, I'm just saying, like, it's not even against this policy. I'm just saying in general, I've seen, I've sat in council meetings, I've I'm a resident of the city. Honestly, before I came on as a employee, I didn't know that all the function of the city, but working there for two years, I realized there's a lot of variables to a operating city. And unfortunately, the residents are, um, not getting the best of the city council as well as the administration due to the tension between the two. And I've tried my best to just be the mediator and neutral party and ensure that I present information in the best way I see fit without taking sides. Um, I feel like as a city government, we are failing the residents and we have to do a better job at working together and making sure that we give the residents the, uh, the best services possible. Thank you.
We're so clear. All right, anyone, any other announcements? How you doing, sir?
How's it going? Uh, just for our, uh, DPW report slash announcements, I got a few things to go through each one of our sub-departments in the DPW, and then just a couple of updates to residents, the city operating as a whole. Uh, our water department fixed, this is all the month of June, just to give a little ideas to, uh, what DPW does pretty much every day. Keep in mind, working hours are thirty-six hours a week. Seven to three thirty, Monday through Thursday, which I tried to get changed once, but there's lots of moving parts to that. Uh, water department fixed six water main breaks, five service leaks, responded to five sewer backups, repaired four gate valves and or replaced them. The highway department spent a hundred and ninety and a half labor hours, uh, dangerous and dead trees as best they could, three hundred and thirty-six labor hours cold patching both major and local streets, three hundred and fifty-two labor hours street sweeping. Uh, the mechanics had twenty-nine significant repair orders sent over to them. Keep in mind, there's three mechanics, it's a hundred and eight total hours a week. Do the math, it's roughly three point seven two hours per job if you're looking at, uh, changing out large truck tires, changing out large brakes, changing out, um, working with larger equipment. That would be assuming they take no breaks and have no lunch, so. Uh, building maintenance, they put together a list for me of what they do each day, which is pretty much everything. Keep in mind, we have one crew leader at the moment working through roughly fifty, sixty work hour, six fifty to sixty work orders a week. Um, all the other guys are out mowing constantly every day from about seven fifteen to three fifteen, because they obviously need time to get in and out and around the city. Um, our meter reading, our fifth tower is almost online to read some of these new meters, so it should become active, which will at least alleviate some of the workload on our three meter reading employees. Uh, and then just a few updates right here. I urge residents and council members and I guess all ten elected officials, you figure between the ten elected officials in the city, you guys should be able to reach, I don't know, ninety, ninety-five percent of residents in your communication. Uh, please put your garbage cans on the extension, get your cars off the road. I've been talking to the police department to try to up enforcement for cars. It's not the nicest thing to see. Obviously, residents get frustrated, but we gotta start doing it at some point. Um, trees, we do have Urban out there working every day. Um, they did have a little bit of turnover in their work crews, so there may be, uh, there's few discussions to be had that I've sent out emails to different people within our department, even a handful of elected officials, if they wanna sit and be part of our discussions with Urban. Still looking for any employees, particular ones with CDLs that can be professional, productive, come in, wanna work at the DPW. We did get a pretty, uh, good employee in a few of the departments, water, highway, meter reading, so hopefully we get a few more coming up. Um, last one, just to, uh, I'll send out more of an email, but, um, little bit of communication coming from the DPW to council members. If, uh, wanna have any problem, if you guys, I'll certainly send you progress meeting, things that you guys can log in virtually if you want. Like I said, we sit in on a lot of, the administration consistently sits in on a lot of progress meetings for both water main replacement, the meter changeout program, and a lot of daily operations. I, I'll send you guys invites, so. Last, uh, the V E P O does have a, uh, we're about thirty-one or thirty-two percent through the meter changeout program. Um, I'll either send you guys the screenshot data of what they put together on a summary and the invite if you wanna sit in on some of the meetings, just to get a little bit more of a grasp, because I think there's, there's just too much. This side doesn't do anything, that side doesn't do anything, these people are wrong, that people, it, it's not productive. So, uh, just keep that in mind. I'll start sending out a few of these meeting invites if you guys wanna sit on them. A lot of them are virtual. That'll conclude everything. I have any questions?
Councilor?
Yes, sir.
This guy is so transparent, and I'll tell you, we're so lucky to have him in our city. I mean, this, he's, he's unbelievable. Um, it's, it's sad to say that he's unbelievable, because, you know, it's just that way everywhere. You know, the, the, uh, the tree, the guy's doing the trees, they're doing a phenomenal job. I was in the DPW yard and he rigged up a mop tree in there and was teaching the, the guys, different knots and roping and rigging and when you climb trees and stuff, it was.
Hopefully a little bit. It's a little bit of, uh, I mean, we're still on a very limited overtime setup, so the employees, I'm gonna be honest, are not the most happy at the moment, but that's just kinda where the city's at.
New year this year, you can.
I'm not gonna, well, you wanna run into the same problem come, uh, April next year? That's why I have.
You could, you could do, you know, overtime, you know.
You could do, you know, overtime, you know, two days a week, leaning it towards something.
I mean, do you need our help on trying to get that five day work week back or something?
Oh, yeah, I've tried.
What can we do?
Non-drag negotiations, so.
Can we split it up, you know, a little bit? Can we split?
Tried to.
Some on Monday and they're off Monday and they work Friday or something.
Let me ask you a question. Is that the issue with the administration or is that the issue with the, with, with the union employees?
City and union. It's not even, I would, I would argue it's not the administrative, it's more of a union issue, but we can discuss that at a later date.
We, we need to work something out on that, sure.
I agree with it.
That's like, you know, and.
It's just, the rest, it, it allows for the workload to increase so high where you have employees wanting to do all the work and not really the resources to respond to a lot of residents. So I'm just trying to at least encourage residents, you can keep, keep calling and sending your requests, but the answers are based on both data and some kind of process to be fair. Somebody's gonna be first, somebody's gonna be last, and there are a lot of tree issues in this city. But uh, we're working through them actively on a daily basis between the supervisors, myself. As I said, council members really wanting it, I'm, I've always used that as don't stop somebody from working. So if you guys wanna come and work, I'm not gonna say, especially it's free labor, so.
You know, the thing is, he mentioned that the towers for the meters, water meters. I, I, I brought that subject up several times. That was phase two. And he's the first one we heard from that there are active towers now.
We got four out of the five. We're waiting on DTE for one at a park that we're having problems with. And once they're all five online, we can actively.
I know nothing.
Start using it to uh, take a little bit of the meter reading workload off. Cause you figure with three meter readers, there's a lot of time historically given to employees off here, so. Occasionally on a good day, you get two, in a department like that, you figure two people for a whole city, basically being male people for every house. It's just math, so.
Keep up the good work.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, we're all tired, right? Okay, I'll speak as a treasurer and I'll be really brief, cause I'm not gonna belabor this whatsoever. I gave you guys a timeline, you know. Hassan Jamal, as you know, when he was budgeting compliance, was, made the discovery, him and I, from twenty-one until twenty-two. I have over twenty emails, right? It was just us two pursuing that. It wasn't until uh, uh, what was that date? In twenty-two, when we got the email from the mayor, and that's when I said I was gonna go to bond council and he said for me to stop. Now, you get an email in May of twenty-five, I was already sending you guys emails. I think that's a direct result, this is my opinion, of trying to get this done for you all, for the residents, to get it done for the residents. So I'm gonna thank you right now. Thank you for supporting that, so we can get it done for our residents. I'm tired of the back and forth. I'm tired of excuses. It's gone on enough. Enough is enough and I appreciate you all. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Alright, now take it over to the audience. Actually, before we continue on with the audience, I wanna recognize Sue, I know she's taken some hard time. She recently.
You're gonna kill me again.
Happy belated birthday.
And happy, well, and happy belated birthday.
Thank you.
One of her friends texted me. One friend tells me something, the other friend tells me another thing. I don't know what to do. I.
I appreciate it. Mal Sukmensky, Amboy Street, Dearborn Heights. Um, when I was on school board and we had a millage or a bond, I'm sorry, and we had weekly meetings. I, like Councilman Sa, volunteered to go to the weekly meeting so that there was somebody that knew what was going on. And it wasn't just to keep informed, it wasn't a trust issue. It was because there's so many parts moving. So I want to personally thank Councilman Sa for volunteering to take that time out. I want to volunteer, if a resident's allowed to go and sit quietly just to be present, I would do that. I am retired now and have the availability to do that. But it is not necessarily about trust. It's because you have to have people involved to understand and to catch all the problems that can come up and arise with these kind of situations. And I, like city council, think that our police and fire do a great job and it has nothing to do with our fire department. They deserve the best. We all want them to have the best. But because our previous fire department is in the state it's in, because things weren't done correctly, because the park is in the state it's in and things weren't done directly, it doesn't hurt to have somebody else there. So get your personal feelings out of it. Quit feeling like it's an attack. It's an extra hand to help the wheel spin and it helps keep everybody on the up and up and the residents informed. So thank you. That was it.
Thank you. Thank you. Council Chair, speaking of birthdays, today's a special person's birthday. It's uh, owner of VIP Car Wash, Paul Aberson's birthday today. Happy birthday, Paul. He's always attends our meetings. He's always. Yeah, he's, I don't know if he's on there at night. I'll probably celebrate him.
Happy birthday, Paul. God, sir, please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Uh, Mike Blackburn, Dearborn Heights, Ar- Arnold Street. Just a couple of things from what uh, Assessor Comer was saying earlier. Um, I hope you guys have picked a right commercial appraiser to go after, um, to fight this. Um, she recommended somebody who the city had used before that won against Home Depot. If I'm doing my math correctly, if the summer taxes are a hundred and eleven thousand dollars and they wanna go from fifty dollars per square foot to thirty thousand, thirty dollars per square foot, that's a forty percent reduction. That's a forty-four thousand dollar reduction in summer taxes. And there'll be another twenty thousand dollars in winter taxes if the city loses this case. So I hope the council made the right decision because sixty-four thousand dollars, the administration will be back here making sixty-four thousand dollars in cuts because we lost, because the city lost this case. So I hope that you are comfortable that you picked the right appraisal firm to handle this case. And with Councilman Sa, we do need, um, we do need uh, somebody on council to oversee some, some engineering because the, the street in front of my house, water still does not flow uphill. And there was a fielding engineer on site and when they, when they did the street in front of my house and I did my curb, they used one, one by four by quarter, quarter inch form and that's how my curb, curb was formed. It's wrong, so um, that's all I gotta say.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Alright, looks like we have uh, one on Zoom. Rose's iPhone. Alright, Rose, we're asking you to unmute yourself, please. It might be a glitch. Rose, can you hear us?
Kid's saying.
Which, if we do it, alright, let's ask anyone else in the audience. Rose, I'm gonna give you another twenty seconds.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Motion.
Hey. Is anybody else in the audience? I was having a conversation outside there.
Alright, see you next meeting.
State your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Krasowski, Columbia. Come on, you have to know this by heart. You listening?
I'm here for you, buddy.
Okay. Um, can we get the contract company to block off this park? Because you're leaving us wide open for liability. So it's a huge liability. We don't need any more lawsuits. So get Mr. Deeb or somebody out there to get it fenced off.
Van Halem.
Van Halem Park.
You give him a form to fill out and get it over to Mr. Deeb. You send Mr. Deeb an email in the morning if you want.
Okay. Okay. But he, he, he should have had that fenced off or the contractor should have had it fenced off with all the damage out there.
Anything else? Yup, try Rose one more time. Guys, guys, Councilman, if you wanna have some side conversations, you guys can do it outside. Thank you. Rose, can you unmute yourself? We're here for you all night, Rose.
I know it's Rose.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Second.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Ahmad, by Councilman Sa, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Rose opposed. Rose, I'm sorry. The ayes have a motion carried. Have a good night, guys.
Recording stopped.